See, we're gonna be getting started in a couple minutes here. Gong or something? It's a full court, it's a full court press, that's what it is. We're gonna start in a couple minutes here.
Art, art center, cultural art center. It's in your packet, but it's not on the...
It's in, it's here?
It's in your binder.
It's not in the online.
It's not on the online.
Some technical challenges right now. Second.
We're waiting for it, like, the clock is there.
Could I put a little note in the Q and A?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Our panelists can't.
Some contacts are in the office because there were some technical difficulties last night, so maybe they are experiencing the same thing.
Log into the computer. Password changed.
I can hear Bertha.
I'd be amazed if there weren't technical difficulties.
All right, we're up and running now.
It's our 20th year for the Film Festival. We've never gotten away without any technical difficulty.
Can we start now?
Running this TV station, it happens all the time.
Yes, we can start, I got the thumbs up.
Okay, good evening, this is a work session with Greenbelt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan, I serve as mayor.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Protem.
Jenny Pompey, council member.
Amy Nissel, council member.
Danielle McKenny, council member.
Zolki Pope, council member.
Rodney Roberts, city council.
Okay, thank you so much, this is a work session, it's a budget work session. Before we dive in, are there any information items, City Manager Sal Marone? Do you have any information items? Anybody else have information items? Okay, well, let me just say this, we do hold these council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups, so to gather information from staff, advisory boards, or residents, no votes or formal actions are taken. Our work sessions and meetings as well are open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state law, so that residents and others can observe councils' deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, and we'll pause periodically for public comment. Let's see, last night, we paused every 20 minutes or so, and we'll sort of play it by ear, but if you're in the room and you wish to make a comment, once you raise your hand, if you're, when you're recognized, you can go to the podium, state your name and where you live in the city of Greenbelt. If you are on Zoom, you can submit a question or comment using the Q and A tab to submit a written question, and of course, you do need to identify yourself, you can't submit an anonymous question or answer. And likewise, you can raise your virtual hand, and when recognized, we'll promote you so you can speak, and if you are watching on cable TV, or Zoom, or what else, Facebook, or YouTube, you can, you can always drop us an email at questions@greenbeltmd.gov. Please limit your comments, three to five minutes, and speak on one topic, one subject, the question currently being considered, and as always, please be civil in your remarks, we'll, we'll do the same. So tonight is our second work session with our recognition groups, the city of Greenbelt, we're going through the budget right now, and as part of that, we take the time to actually hear from each of the organizations that receive in-kind or financial support from the city, and there's a broad range of Greenbelt-based nonprofits and other organizations that are recognition groups. So, our goal is to actually provide some support to organizations that, cultural, athletic, recreational, civic, service, or social organizations that are open to the general public, and just in general, these organizations reflect significant participation by and benefit to the residents of Greenbelt. So there's two types of recognition groups, there are, well, Greg Varda, our director of recreation, and Nicole DeWolff, our arts program supervisor, they are here providing staff support to the process, and they work with a committee that oversees these applications. Greg, how are you tonight?
I'm fine, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, hey, do you want to say a little bit more about the process?
Yeah, so there's three types of certification, there's basic certification, which is in-kind support, and then there's, there's project grants and operating grants, and the project grants are basically to help meet the expenses that come with discreet, one-time projects, usually done within a 12-month period, and then the operating grants are to help with programming or operational costs with the organization. These, these applications were reviewed by a, a grant review panel made up of, we tried to make it up of five advisory boards this year, we were, we had three members of, of the participating advisory boards, they review the applications and write a recommendation to council, which is the report in the packet.
Fantastic, and you mentioned in-kind support, and by that, you mean these groups have access usually to the city facilities, or meetings placed, space in one of our buildings or athletic fields?
Usually free meeting space, once a month, in one of our facilities, or use of our athletic fields, occasionally it'll go beyond that, but mostly that's the case.
Sometimes a little bit of marketing support.
Sometimes.
You know, okay, well, first off...
I have notified staff that we do not see council chambers, nor do we hear anybody, so I assume they're having additional technical problems, and they're working on it, so hopefully we'll be on soon, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, very good, and we're gonna keep rolling, because we're on a tight schedule here, and this is being still videotaped for, on cable TV, I believe. So first up, we got the Makerspace, so could the representatives of the Makerspace please come up to the table? Yes. Why don't you come, why don't you front and center? Come on up.
You should take the center seat.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, hey, welcome, it's great to have you here tonight, you know, before the meeting, I was fumbling around, and I was looking for an extension cord, and I couldn't find one. What, what's a guy like me supposed to do, you know, there's basic things that you need sometimes, and we've got the Greenbelt Makerspace Cooperative, do you have suggestions, what, what I could do?
Um, yeah, we've, so we've, have started a tool lending library, that, so that people can get things when they need them only, you know, periodically, and don't have to buy them themselves, or store them, or, and it's also a way of sharing our expertise between everybody, so.
That's fantastic, so we were just going to kind of take a look at, at your application, if you can kind of summarize the mission of the organization, and you kind of evolved from Makerspace to the Tool Library, or so...
Right, yeah, we'd like to, you know, going back to the Makerspace, when, if we can get a little more room somewhere to set up a shop, but, but we turned that space over that we were in, over to the movie theater to use as their second screen, and that worked out, actually for both of us, because the pandemic came along, and that would have been difficult, too, so we put everything into storage, and then we were, we'd always wanted to have a tool lending library, and we were gonna use the basement of the, of the building over, sprinklers in, so that was too expensive, so we never got around to doing it, and we thought we would start up again, since that's what we had, was all the tools that we had remaining, and when the couples bought the granite building, they actually asked us to, to come in and... So we thought we'd get going on that, and that would be a good way to, you know, get people joining again, and, you know, you have a real, something to do right away, I mean, you can borrow the tools, so, so we've done, and then we've gone back to doing the repair cafes, I guess we were doing that even during the pandemic, had some classes also in using sewing machines and some other things, and we have a lot of requests for other classes, we just have to get more organized to handheld them, so.
Yeah, it's a fantastic resource, I was kidding around a little bit earlier, I've been over to the Makerspace, and I've been able to avail myself to the Repair Cafe, and it's, it's a great resource. Hey, so can you tell me about your Board of Directors, who's on your board?
Um, the, well, that's, I don't think, um, just list everybody, or?
Yeah, I was just kind of working through the application, basically.
So I'm the president, and Randall Evans is the vice president, and Phil Stratness, our treasurer.
It's great, and you've got volunteers, it looks like you've got about, tiers you have, it looks like there's a good blend, 25?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I probably, I don't know what I put down here, but we have about 60 on our volunteer list, that people, that periodically help out, so.
And you've expanded your hours?
And then, well, we're open two days a week, we have a lot of volunteers, so if we can get organized, figure out a time for yet more times to be open, we would do that,
all right, Mr. Roberts?
How much space do you have down there?
You know, I don't remember, it's three small offices, kind of all in one thing, it's in the, you know, the basement corner with no windows, so it wasn't, but it worked out just fine for us, because we wanted to put, you know, shelving up the walls and stuff, so.
Big enough to where you can have a little workspace at all, or?
No, it's, it's basically filled with the tools, yeah, right, yeah, uh huh, yeah, yeah, we would like to go back, we keep getting requests for the, have a shop area, and we do sometimes take like the table saw outside, and people come and use it, so, repair cafes have kind of spilled out on the lawn.
Kind of stuff do you fix in the repair cafe?
Um, it's always a mixture, there's always lamps, but, you know, small appliances, clothing, bicycles, yeah, anything, basically, we take a crack at it, some electronics isn't easy, but, to repair, but we probably get a 80% repair rate of, I guess, so, and some of it's just, you know, helping people do it themselves, that might not have thought of it, and also, we have all the different kinds of glues, and, and the various tools that makes it easier to do that sort of thing, so, but more, I think of it as a teaching, you know, sharing how to do things, and, and the whole, you know, you can do things yourself,
Okay, so in your, in your budget request, you're looking for funding, and you're going to actually purchase some additional equipment?
Yeah, there's several items that people keep asking for, that we probably won't be donated, sharpening system, and pressure washer keeps getting asked for, and then we also put down a GFI, that go on the extension cords, because one thing we have done is bought safety equipment, you know, goggles, and, and that sort of thing, and this would be another thing that nobody's ever gonna donate, but we feel, I feel it's important to have a safe site, or whatever, when people are using the different things, so.
Hey, and the membership piece is, is an important part, it's a cooperative, so, what is it, $20 a year, or $20 to join?
Well, we ask for just, yeah, sliding scale of income, sort of donation, we kind of following the pattern that other tool libraries are doing, like, there's a one in Baltimore that's quite popular, so.
I think right now, our base level is about, it's about 50 a year, for a member.
That's great, so what are your goals for next year, I guess the farmer's market opens up, this coming Sunday, and you're open the same hours, basically?
And yeah, no, definitely, we have a number of volunteers that want to volunteer in the evening, so we'll find some times to be open then, to get a volunteer coordinator or somebody, we can maybe, we have all these volunteers that we don't, we need to coordinate them and actually organize the different things, that's not my specialty, unfortunately, so.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just, I had a question about the, the tool sharpening, is the idea that that's something that also gets lent out, or is that something that's available when you're open?
No, it would be, yeah, both, lending and maybe at the repair cafes, or the, or just other times, yeah.
Because I know they had the, the, the tool sharpening tent at the, the garden club, and there was, they were doing a pretty brisk business, although I do wonder about that as being something that requires some expertise to run it, so, it might be, if it could be supervised, it might be a good idea.
Yeah, we have several people, several volunteers are, are good at this, so, so they'll do it, like, it's at the repair cafes, but you're right, I mean, people just borrowing it, I don't know, but I don't think you would ruin things, I mean, you might ruin your tool a little bit, but you're not gonna get hurt on it.
Right, no, hopefully not, but you just might damage the tools, I suppose, if you don't know how to use it properly.
It has the right angles, and that sort of thing, so.
And the, the power washer does seem like something that you need every now and again, so that is a perfect thing for a tool lending library, because you need it, you don't need it every day, or every weekend, well, I don't know, maybe there are some people who do every weekend, but most people do that maybe a couple times a year.
Yeah, at best, yeah, right, so, yeah, a lot of people coming in for the single things, I mean, or something you would only use once, the dollies, or the...
Hey, looking at your budget request, you know, I'm, I'm not that swift at math, but it looks like your membership dues and individual donations more or less equals the same amount as the request from the city's support, that's a coincidence, huh?
Um, I may have not understood how to fill this in.
Well, it does, so.
So I may have made a mistake there.
Oh, no, 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 that's actually a good thing, so, between your memberships and your individual donations, that's, that's gonna actually match the amount that you're asking for from the city.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was just assuming that's what it meant, was to match the...
It's just fantastic.
Because we do have the, you know, the...
Very good, hey, are there any questions from council, and if there are none, Mr. Varda, can you, the review committee, the volunteers who reviewed the proposal, did they have any comments?
Sure, so the Makerspace, from the, from the grant review panel, the Makerspace scored 69 points, which is in the good range, their $562 request is 50% of the organization's project budget, the reviewer comments were very clear need and budget, a relatively small ask for funding, but would provide important tools for the lending library, the Makerspace has good name recognition within Greenbelt, though fewer people know about the Tool Lending Library.
Very good, and also in the packet, there's a letter of support from the Green ACES, which is also very nice. Hey, so thank you for what, what you've been doing for the city, it sounds like you've got excellent plans for the coming year, and we appreciate you coming and sitting with us and talking with us for a few minutes.
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you so much. And next up, I believe we have the Greenbelt Refugee Aid Committee.
Then I think we also have Frank Dervasi online.
Yes, yes, we do. Okay, welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's great to see you all here in person, and, and that Frank Dervasi online, I guess he couldn't make it down here, but...
He's far away, he's out west someplace.
New Mexico.
Yeah, Mexico, oh, okay, I thought he might be on upper, upper ridge there in Greenbelt Heights.
I thought we weren't supposed to say things like that.
No, we're not, okay, well, thank you for putting forward this proposal, do you want to go ahead and give us a summary of, you know, we, we made a grant last year, so if you want to talk a little bit about the outcomes from last year, and what, and why you're asking this year?
I would love to, thank you, I'm Steve Skolnik, by the way, and I live at 8A Ridge Road, I'm the vice president of Grace, Greenbelt Refugee Aid Committee, our president Frank Dervasi is with us on Zoom, this is board member Bill Jones, and this is...
I got a title?
And this is, and this is board member Joyce Campbell, secretary. Yeah, so there, so we, we formed ourselves in 2022, in March, with the purpose of providing humanitarian aid and assistance to refugees fleeing Russia's military aggression in Ukraine, and as you are aware, that continues, their unprovoked and illegal war, to this day, and thousands and thousands of civilians have been displaced, and it's still going on. We are a homegrown community project, we engage Greenbelt residents and others to participate as volunteers and donors, we currently actively support, we have active support from over 100 residents, we currently are supporting four refugees, under the federal government's humanitarian parole program, that's a capital H, capital P, and we're looking forward to welcoming another mother and child next week, I believe, bringing the total of six at, at the moment, a seventh will probably be coming shortly thereafter. Grace currently rents two apartments that are owned by the Greenbelt Development Corporation, which is a subsidiary of Greenbelt Homes, and we're proud of that, because the money that we take in, we spend here in our local economy, and to, and that's, that's a very important point, and the money that comes from the city is also spent in the local economy, either on rent, the major proportion of it, or at the Co-op grocery store, you know, buying provisions, such like, we, we also provide furnishings and household items, and, and at no cost to the refugees, and these are donations, mostly, but not completely, from Greenbelt residents, and we also, I'm very proud to say, have provided bicycles, and that's important, because none of them have access to an automobile at this point, okay? Grace members include tutors skilled in English as a second language, who give time weekly to aid the refugees in improving English language skills, which obviously are critical to their success in our community, we also have assisted in enrolling the kids in school, they're, the two girls currently attend Greenbelt Elementary School, and we help prepare the adult refugees for local employment, which I'm happy to say is going pretty well. We partner with Lutheran Social Services Agency of the National Capital Area, who are the, the pros and, and the 84-pound gorilla in, in dealing with refugees in this area, included but not limited to fiscal and health benefits that are available to parolees, also various state and local assistance programs. Grace is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit charity, we've raised over $28,000 in private donations, not including donations in kind, such as furnishings, as we've mentioned before, Grace members and donors do not receive any goods or services or salary from the refugees, we're all volunteers, and just as a reminder, the city of Greenbelt very kindly and generously awarded Grace a discretionary grant in 2023 in the amount of $20,000, thank you very much, it's been well spent. Our organization is a five-member board of directors, three of whom are with us tonight, Frank is our president, and we also have Marcy Michelle as our fifth.
They're all Greenbelt residents.
Greenbelt residents, thank you, we publicize our activities, and we solicit members and donations through word of mouth here in Greenbelt, we participate in farmer's market days, and we present reel and meal meetings at the New Deal Cafe on refugee issues, and also, we do booth participation at the Green Man and Labor Day festivals. Our membership and participation in Grace activities, open to all who share our goals, no consideration of race, religion, or sexual preference, and we're happy to be improving the, just a little bit at a time, the diversity here in Greenbelt with our refugees, who are obviously from, from far away. In terms of financial history, I think we've pretty much already gone, gone through that, we receive funding from private donations, the LSS, NCA subsidies, and the city of Greenbelt, the approximate amount of $52,000, expenditures are primarily for apartment rent, that's the, that's the, that's the big one, and other direct expenses, including we purchased a computer, some clothing, and things like that, boots. We expect to receive about $20,000 in private donations during fiscal '24, '25, our fiscal year is December, January to December, and not including the $5,000 project grant that we are requesting from the city, and Grace members, including board members, are volunteers, and as I said, receive no salary or payment of any kind, and be happy to answer any questions or entertain any discussion you may have.
Yeah, very good, Mr. Jones?
Just a small correction, we actually are already supporting the two, the fifth and sixth one that he was talking about, that is, there's an organization which has in the past paid to fly Ukrainians over here, and they have strongly restricted what they've done, so that we have had to pay for their airfare coming over next week, we did not have to do that for Anna Sazanova and the two girls.
Yeah, that's true, as a, as a policy, we, we try and avoid paying for airplane tickets.
Became necessary, and also...
So far, we've succeeded.
Yeah, and also, they had to move out of their apartment, and had to stop working for repairs, so, so we've given a little additional support.
Wait, you're doing some very, very important work, these, such a tenuous time for many people throughout the world, so I'm just wondering, looking at, at your budget, you know, I have a hard time with budgets, but it looks like you're kind of building up, you've got some savings and interest income that you've accumulated, is that from last year, carryover from last year to this year, it's like, it's about $20,000?
$20,000 interest? No.
Item K on the budget here, $19,056.
That's not interest.
Savings and interest is under that category.
That's what we have on hand, and there's actually no interest, it's a category of savings and interest, I'm quite sure, because we keep it in Greenbelt Federal Credit Union, doing things locally, and they don't pay interest, pardon me, yeah.
Okay, okay, I was just, so that's savings that you're carrying over into this year?
Yes, we have overall, since the beginning, had $26,000 in personal contributions, and of course, $20,000 from the city, but, so we do still have some now, with these two that are just coming in, they're going to need a good deal of support.
Yeah, we're trying to be very conscious of expenditures, and, you know, obviously, we don't have a big budget, and, and the need is great.
Wondering with, with the relationship with the Community Development Corporation, GHIV subsidiary, do you have a special arrangement or anything with them?
No, no, we sign a lease, just like everybody else, and the only, the only issue is, we do have an agreement with them, that although we have signed the lease, we're not living in the apartment, which is against their rules, but they've made an exception, because they understand the situation.
In other words, they do not ask for a credit check, they do not ask for a criminal check, they just take our word for it, that these Ukrainians are good, and, and they cut us some slack in a couple other ways.
And clearly, we're responsible for the apartment, I mean, if, you know, heaven forbid, you know, one of the refugees did damage the apartment, Grace would have to make that right.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, so, so you've got the two in apartments now, and the one next week, are you gonna... Are you going to be renting a third apartment for them?
Of course, the one is not available right now. So we're hustling just a little bit to house the new mother and son. And happily, there's a very kind lady in Boxwood who has a basement apartment that she's going to donate for free.
More like a ground floor apartment, not a basement. It's beautiful and.
So we're a little worried about that, but it's going to work out okay.
Is the plan then to, when an apartment becomes available, move them in? Yeah?
Yes, absolutely.
But should be a one-bedroom apartment instead of a studio because it's a woman and her 11-year-old son.
And is the idea then for the refugees that you have now, is there a timeline for them to, once they have jobs? Because I think you said that one of them is working to find apartments themselves and then you replace the spaces with more refugees coming in?
Yes, or they become lessees themselves. That's another possibility, and it hasn't happened yet.
Right, yeah, it sounds like. But that would actually be, that would mean they wouldn't have to move then, wouldn't they? And you could just get a new apartment in the building that somebody else was vacating.
Yes, you've got it. And one of the sort of symbiotic things that we have going on is that the Green Belt Development Corporation apartments are very economical. They're, you know, they're lower rent than the surrounding apartments in town. So it's good for us.
Better kept up. But anyway, I'm on GHI.
Is the goal more or less to stick with two apartments, just with the turnover as people become?
Three or even four, depending upon how many become available and how many refugees we have to deal with. In the case of the one with the two little girls, we just submitted her application. We got the translations, official translations of her bachelor's and master's degree and submitted her application to be a Prince George's County Public School teacher.
Excellent.
And.
Turned out to be, getting those translations turned out to be quite a problem.
But we hope that she will be approved for it. There's a great shortage of teachers and so she can start teaching in September. And at that point, she takes over paying the rent and everything.
To fill the.
Yes, but probably keeping the same apartment and we'll just.
It's a good model. It makes a lot of sense.
But we want to get them independent as soon as possible. She's currently working as a substitute. Well, anyway, it's $16 an hour.
Just to clarify your previous question, the humanitarian parole program is a two-year program.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay, so that's the cycle that you're on.
Yeah, they have two years to kind of get their feet under them. And within that time period, apply for permanent resident status.
So that's why, since you're only about a year in, you haven't reached the end of that first one. That makes sense.
Just exactly a year in.
Councilmember McKinnney?
This might be part of what you were just mentioning with the program, but how do you select or identify the refugees coming? Because I'm certain there's probably a lot that are in need. And then my second question is, are you open to refugees from other countries? Or, and how did you, obviously, there's the war in Ukraine, but there's also, you know, conflicts in a lot of places around the world. So how have you determined just?
Would Frank Gervasi be?
Well, I can answer that. We are very fortunate to have a good relationship with the Lutheran Social Services National Capital Area. And they are extremely active in handling refugees. And the referrals that we, for the folks that we have, are coming from them. Okay, so there's a vetting process that, thank heavens, we don't have to do. Okay? But we do have to sponsor, and that's a, we have to apply through the U.S. Customs and Information, Immigration Service. It's a whole online process that also takes some time and energy. But yeah, that's how that happens. And to your second question, yes, absolutely, we're not limiting ourselves to Ukrainians. We actually have given some small amount of funding to an African family already. And there's certainly no objection to refugees from other parts of the world.
Okay, are there any other questions from council?
Not a question, but I think it's a great, great thing that you put off, I mean, off the ground a couple of years ago. I remember when Frank was first starting to talk about it. So I think that's really wonderful. Thank you so much.
Mr. Gervasi, did you have anything to add?
Make sure you unmute Frank.
Let's see, Frank, you're not, Mr. Gervasi, we cannot hear you.
Now you can hear me.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I'm in New Mexico and I'm amazed this thing even worked. We went through Welcome US. That was set up by, it's an NGO, but it was set up to bring in people really first from Ukraine. And if you recall, the petition we gave city council back in March of 2022, when this war first broke out, we wanted to bring two to three families. And we've achieved that goal pretty much. And then we also said that it's going to be families from other areas, too. There's no lack of areas, you know, the southern border is a crisis, other areas. But right at then and there, that was an incredible crisis. I also wanted to say that, and I love to repeat this, that the statistic, or the prediction is for a billion climate refugees in about eight or nine years. This is, to me, a long-term project that we can, you know, we're not going to develop it overnight, but we're working toward a mechanism that Green Belt can do its part. Because what happened in Europe? The first family came from a town called Bussum. They had bounced around different places, first in Poland and then in in three different places, in Belgium, in Holland, I mean. And they, the government was paying for, there were over 4,000 refugees just from Ukraine in a city of 40,000. That overwhelmed their living arrangements and they were, you know, it actually brought down their government because they didn't know how to handle all this stuff. And we're trying to set up a mechanism here that if similar, and it very well could happen, that that's a similar situation is going to happen here in the United States. So I just wanted to mention that this is kind of a long-term project that we're trying to build.
Hey, I, we appreciate the aspiration. We recognize the good work, the very important work that you're doing. I think when you came to us last year, it was as a project grant. So the request last year was 20, the request this year is five. So we're hoping that you can continue moving towards self-sufficiency if the city is, you know, very, very sensitive to supporting worthwhile efforts. Yes?
I will say, just on that note, they did note here that they have a matching grant for our grant. They have a matching $5,000 donor, which is great, you know? Great to see you guys doing that.
Mr. Varda?
Sure. Green Belt Refugee Aid Committee scored 81 points, which is very good to excellent. The grant request is of $5,000, is 19% of the organization's program budget. The reviewer comments were, "The benefits to having these families living with us is overwhelming. Might like to see more community partnerships." "Literally and directly supports increasing diversity in the city and leadership is well-qualified and experienced." And I'll just, just to clarify, last year, this organization did not come through the recognition group process. They came after the fact. So this is the first year they're in this process.
Hey, well, thank you so much for your good work. If there are no further questions from council, we're a little bit behind schedule. I want to make sure that we stick to the schedule. So thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you all.
Not easy, I know all that paperwork.
Periodically for additional.
My cousin in Germany, too, we had, we took in a family as well from the Ukraine a year ago because we had an apartment, you know, available. So it's, it's not easy. I understand.
She's online.
But they are now, you know, they are self-sufficient as well and were able to move out because it was a smaller apartment and they did move on. So success story there.
Thank you so much. Hey, let's move on to Friends of the New Deal. Yes, sir, please. Let's move on to the Friends of the New Deal Cafe. Let's move on to the Friends of the New Deal Cafe, please. Megan, are you there?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
We're running late, though. You can go ask them.
Oh, he deserves to be listened to.
We're running late. We need to move on to the next one. We need to be respectful of everybody's time.
That's not an excuse to ignore someone. He has a right to speak. You should call on him.
What is council's role? Should we move on?
Is anyone here to answer? Are you willing to?
I think we should also make sure that we're being respectful of the people that are waiting since we are running late and ask if they're okay if we take two minutes for Mr. Orleans to ask his question.
Ms. Hanley, are you there?
That's fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Okay, okay. Mr. Orleans, please.
Thank you very much.
You have two minutes.
Thank you all. This is a very good program that Green Belt and the committee is doing. It was unclear to me. It has been from the beginning. Are we, but at this point, this is the question. Are we only have two GHI apartments to house refugees? If there were more that could come through the program vetted by Lutheran Services, allowed by the sponsoring federal agency, could we house more? Where would we house them? Are we going to restrict ourselves just to the two apartments?
GHI has recently increased it from two to four. Sorry. GHI recently, the board recently voted to increase it from two to four apartments there. And we are not restricted to GHI apartments. So if there were a strong need and we got a bunch of money and a bunch of Ukrainians, we'll take care of it.
I'm very happy to hear that. It would be an interesting topic for a future council work session as to how we can expand upon the good work that the Refugee Aid Committee is doing. Thank you.
Let me add just one thing, Bill, there. It's complicated because sponsors, personal sponsors are required in the humanitarian parole program. And it's not a small feat to be a sponsor. So it's not just apartments. It's a whole process. And so it's sponsors and apartments and other stuff.
I thank you for the answer, Steve. I'm just thinking, since it is such a good program, we all should do what we could do to allow for an expanded opportunity for refugees in Greenbelt. Thank you.
I would note that some of those answers were actually addressed in their presentation.
Yes, they were. Hey, so if we could move on to Meg Hanley, Hanny, from the Friends of the New Deal Cafe. How are you tonight, Megan?
I'm doing well. I hope you are, too.
Yeah, thank you so much. Hey, we're looking over your grant application for the next year. Do you want to give us a quick update date on FANCA? What do you have planned? What did you accomplish last year and what you're asking for the funding for?
Well, we, as you know, we helped to put on the music festivals that are in Roosevelt Center. Last year was the 20th anniversary, actually, of the Green Belt Blues Festival. So that was pretty exciting. And we also did the Jazz Festival and helped with the Crazy Quilt Festival. This year, we have the same three festivals planned. We also do six art shows a year because we have an artist for two months and then we have six receptions during the year for the artists. This year, we're planning on doing a children's puppet show and activity sometime in November. So those are the things right now that we are working on.
Fantastic. You mentioned the five festivals. Didn't the Crazy Quilt Festival used to be first up? Has that been moved to the fall?
It has been moved to the fall. That's correct.
Okay. So just in terms of the budget request, specifically, it's for the five festivals. It's for the, can you just real quick summarize the request for the coming year?
You're asking me about why we're asking for that amount?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, as with everything, a lot of the band prices are going up. The prices are going up for the people that help us do the sound. So we just, you know, it would be nice to have a little bit of extra income for that. We do, let me put my glasses on here. We do still get approximately $4,000 to $4,500 in donations every year. And some years, we do have corporate sponsorship. So, but that's basically the money that we're asking for goes into those three music festivals, and that's why we're asking for the $3,000.
Okay. Hey, just looking over the budget that was turned in, it looks like the vendors, how, the relationship with the vendors that are there during the festivals, do they pledge or give back a certain amount? And is that included in the individual donations? Or is the $300 that's listed, is that all of the vendor fees for all five festivals?
Yeah, those are the vendor fees together, exactly.
So it's pretty inexpensive to have a booth?
To have a booth, yes. We charge $35 if they sign up a month before, if they want to sign up like a few days before, right at the festival, at the blues festival, then it's $45.
Okay, and do they give a percentage of their sales back or anything like that? Or it's just $35 or $45?
We've never actually asked for that.
Counsel?
Just wanted to ask about the, because last year, I think, the Crazy Quilt Festival ended up being sort of replaced by the Masquerade Ball. Is that?
Well, what we did is to help them, we paid for the bands. We paid for the bands and then they took care of everything else. But yes, because of the fact that the cafe has been in some financial difficulties, we decided to work together. I mean, basically, we produced the festivals anyway to help the New Deal Cafe. It's one of the reasons. And so that some of the money went to the New Deal, excuse me, the Crazy Quilt pretty much became the masquerade. I don't think that's the way it's going to be this year. This year, we're going to have an independent Crazy Quilt.
Yeah, that was my question. Okay, so it's going to go back to normal, to the normal Crazy Quilt Festival this year?
Yes.
Other questions from council? What did the committee have to say, the review committee?
Actually, my colleague Nicole DeWald, art supervisor, is online and she'll handle the arts question.
Mr. Wall, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
The, thank you, thank you. The review committee commented that the music festivals are a key part of keeping Roosevelt Center active and bringing in residents as well as non-residents. The festivals proposed in the application are long-running Green Belt events with a dedicated audience and following. They noted all festivals supported with city funds are well-known and attract regular participants. They did note that the board, the leadership group, is a little small, so they'd love to see growth in that area, as is well-deserved by these events. And they'd love to see a bit more representation from outside of all Greenbelt, if that's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Personally, I'm just looking at the fees for vendors and it seems like maybe there's a way, I know you want to keep it as low as possible, but, you know, if you were to make a distinction between nonprofit organizations like the Blues Society as opposed to vendors that are selling things, I think the way that I've seen a lot of other festivals work is there's a registration fee and then some sort of a percentage of sales or something is included. And it seems like you might be able to raise a little bit more money if someone's there for profit and they're having a really great day. It seems like they should kick a little bit back more to the festival. You think that might be possible?
Yeah, we can, that's something that we can definitely discuss. The Blues Society, who does a lot of advertising for us to help get people to Greenbelt for the festival, that is, you know, given to them free to have a booth there, to say thank you for what they do for all the advertising. But we can certainly talk about maybe taking a 5%, you know, asking 5% of the sales or something like this from the vendors.
Yeah, I mean, the information booths are one thing and they should be free or really a nominal cost. But for some of the vendors that are doing well and, you know, sharing wonderful art or other goods and services, it seems like they should be able to help a little bit more. Wouldn't be a bad idea.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, Councilmember Neesal.
Yeah, just a slight counterpoint. Those fees are actually very much in line with what the Labor Day Festival charges as well. The Arts and Crafts Festival charges $35 for one day and $50 for two. So it might be worthwhile if groups start to charge more for booths that all of the different groups that run booths maybe work together. Because just the fact that they're both $35 now makes me wonder if maybe a long time ago, everyone agreed to charge the same amount.
Must have been a long time ago. Okay. Okay. Megan, thank you so much for your work. And I look forward to seeing you this weekend on Saturday at the Green Man Festival.
Green Man, yeah.
Which starts off at 10 o'clock?
That's, I think that's when the drum circle starts, yeah.
Drum circle, and when will the...
Yeah, it tends to be the drum circle.
Okay, what time does, will the Green Man emerge?
That I'm not sure, because as I say, I don't, we don't run that particular festival. It's Cheers. And I haven't really been involved with planning that one, so I'm not sure exactly.
But I'll probably still see you there.
Oh, yeah. No, you'll definitely see myself and Mike there. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Hey, thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Bye-bye now.
And next up, I believe, do we have Cheers?
I think Babe Ruth is next.
Okay.
And he's online.
Hey, good evening. Ian, are you there?
Yes, good evening.
Hey, good evening. How are you tonight?
I'm doing well. How about yourself?
Not too bad, not too bad. Thank you for applying once again for an operating grant from the city of Greenbelt. We appreciate it. So you're looking for $3,500?
Yes.
And can you tell me a little bit about your programs, your requests this year?
So our request, looking for 3,500 to upkeep everything we have going over the past couple of years, since I've been involved since 2017. So just looking at maintaining the field at the current level. We are excited for some of the renovations that hope to take place in the fall, but maintaining the field through the spring and summer season. And then for, as far as equipment, uniforms, just keeping those things up to date so our players have what they need for the coming season. And last year, we actually had an increase in numbers. We had, instead of two teams, we had three teams. So we kind of had to make do with that and adjust kind of on the fly. Last year, we weren't expecting to have that increase, but it was a good thing that we did. So we're glad to have an increase in numbers for our spring season last year. And hopefully, we can maintain that for this coming season.
Thank you. Hey, looking at your board, you know, you've got a pretty good blend of people. I guess the folks that are not from Greenbelt are from surrounding areas?
So I would go far enough back, there were more teams throughout the county that participate in our league in the past, really, the past decade or so, that a lot of the teams have dropped off. So some of the coaches or different people we have involved, we kind of just took in from other programs that just weren't getting enough numbers to maintain a team. So we have a pretty, pretty strong population in our team from the Hyattsville area, from Beltsville, from different surrounding areas that just don't have their own, you know, city-based team anymore.
Very good, very good. Counsel, do you have questions? Number ten?
Just, because it seems like, I think, one of the issues that we've come up against is a field space with all of these sports teams. Is that, I think, is that something that we're...
It's not so much an issue with Babe Ruth, since they use the 90-foot diamond and Mr. Gleason runs that whole operation and schedules that field. He pretty much has a blanket permit for that field.
Okay, which one is the 90-foot one?
That's the one closest to the tennis courts.
Okay.
Yeah, the baseball field closest to the tennis courts. On the, closest to the tennis courts on the youth center end. There's a smaller one at the other end of the field. That's for T-ball. The bigger kids play on the bigger diamond. Yeah.
Okay, if there are no further questions, Mr. Martikin, what did the committee have to say?
So Babe Ruth Baseball scored 79 points, which is very good. The $3,500 is 49% of the organization's operating budget. Reviewers' comments were dedicated volunteers, strong fiscal management, appropriate level of city requests.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other comments from counsel? Okay, I'd like to continue moving on. I don't know, it looks like one individual wants to ask a question on every single topic. Initially, at the beginning of the work session, I proposed pausing every 20 or 30 minutes. So if we pause for three or four minutes each time, we're going to run significantly behind schedule. What is council's will? Shall I pause now and take a question?
I think the, we actually do have a little bit of extra time on this one. I think my concern was staying on time and we are actually a little bit ahead now.
So two, maybe two minutes.
Okay. Mr. Orleans, please.
Thank you. I don't know what the speaker on Babe Ruth meant by maintaining the fields, but it would seem to me that maintaining the fields is a function of either the Public Works Department or the Public Works Department in conjunction with the Recreation Department. Why are the athletic organizations seeking funds from the city, which I'm all forgiving them? But why should they be using those funds to maintain the fields? That's, they're there to coordinate play on those fields, not to maintain them. So if the maintaining of the field statement by that individual could be explained to me, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Martin?
So what the Babe Ruth Organization does is they primarily take care of their own mound. And after a game, they have mound clay, which they compact into the mound to keep it in good shape. That's one of the procedures we worked out with them. So it's important that you do that right after the game. So if it gets rained on, you don't want to puddle there. They just take care of the mound themselves.
So they actually augment the basic maintenance that the Public Works Department puts into the field, thereby improving it for other entities in Greenbelt to use that same field?
Public Works still drags the field and they cut the grass. And, you know, we just kind of work together.
I saw them out there on Monday doing just that, you know?
Going to state that it was only $140 last year, and so I assume that was just for buying the clay. It's not like a large amount.
Yeah. They have a storage shed and they store the clay in their shed at the field. It just helps.
These are older kids, so the play is pretty rigorous. I mean, they really...
These are high school-aged kids, right. It's very competitive.
They need to maintain that. They wear the mound down, is what I'm saying. More so than maybe our little league teams would.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Gleason, can you give us any highlights of the season, games that the public and counsel and others might want to take in?
For the, the upcoming season, we don't have our schedule. We're working with the county right now to get the schedule. So I don't have specifics on all of that, but a couple, there's been two seasons in the last three or four years where we've actually hosted the part of the state tournament at Braden Field. So at, when we finish our regular season and then some of our teams go into postseason play. And we've hosted teams from Frederick County and from other parts of the state come down for a weekend tournament. And that's usually the weekend after July 4th. Like I said, it's still working on getting the final dates for this year, but usually somewhere, second week of July, somewhere in there, we usually have some teams coming from out of county, other parts of the state to come down for some games. And then we hope to, in the past, we've kept our schedule in the news review, so we hope to do that this year. Once we have it, get some press in the news review so that the community can come out and see some of our games.
Hey, when's opening day?
It should be right around Memorial Day. I hope to have the final schedule within a week, but it should be, give or take, a few days right before, right after Memorial Day.
Fantastic. Hey, thank you so much for your good work. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, this time, we're going to move to Cheers. Cheers, why don't you come closer? Pull a chair up at the table.
Chair up.
The slides? If you have them on a thumb drive or something. Oh, she's got it. Okay, she'll do it. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
It looks like you guys got the memo about the green.
Yes, yes, we did.
And purple and green. A little bit of everything.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, so Cheers, it's great to have you here. I founded it in 2006. So many outreach programs throughout the city. It's just really inspiring to see the intergenerational work that's going on. Do you want to talk a little bit about the program and talk about what you have coming up this year?
Sure. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for all the support that we've gotten, really, since 2006. And so let's go to the next slide. I just have a few slides.
Okay.
So gratitude, I want to say for support and encouragement and also patience when we, you know, when the gardens didn't look as good as we wanted them to look. And also for co-learning. And then I'm just going to give an update about our projects. And I would like to ask my colleagues to jump in. So let's go to the next slide. So Cheers' mission is basically to be a collective impact organization. We're all volunteers. We have no office. We have no staff. But our overall mission is to work for the health of all within the Chesapeake Bay watershed through projects in education, arts, research, and community building. We do a lot of things with partners. And we've been a recognition group, I think, since 2013. I'm not sure exactly the date, but we do have an MOU with the city from 2013 about the Three Sisters Gardens, which outlined what Cheers would do and what the city would do. And so that's basically, and let's go to the next slide, which is our, we have, we have projects that come and go, but right now, we have eight projects. And so I'm going to just ask Carolyn to just say a little bit about the Three Sisters Gardens and the Food Forest and the Earth Squad. And then we'll go on to some of the others. So do you want to just talk about the first two here?
I will, I will. First of all, the three gardens. And so I think each coordinator, Bill and I, my husband, we are with the Three Sisters Gardens West and the Earth Squad, and it looks phenomenal. We draft people, pull people. Fantastic students from Spring Hill Lake Elementary School. We also do things over there. We take care of your weeds in the front. We call and ask because we need projects. So it's all a part of what I like about Cheers is collaboration. And so we are doing well. We are working, Greg, with the youth center, okay, with the after-school program at Spring Hill Lake, that even though they're not enrolled in the Earth Squad, they see us, we supply snack Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for all Greenbelt youth. Okay, and they just run out and they help and we paint and we work together. So the spirit of working together, volunteerism, healthy foods, just citizen scientist is what we want, to take our place. Here we go. So that's what's going on. The Food Forest looks much better. Thank goodness. You haven't seen it. It looks good. We're planting trees. There's berries. Nature is wonderful. It's kind of taken care of, believe it or not, some of that erosion from the visitors that we've had. And I'm amazed. I sit there and just watch what nature, if you leave it alone, okay? And so what else can I say? We have fun over there. We're the colorful garden. We paint a lot, but with meaning. The children understand. They plan, they design, they plant. We observe and we harvest. I'm getting better at that.
They're very excited, too.
They are.
Yeah, they're very excited and they're very anxious to do it and they really have a lot of fun. And probably sometimes don't realize how much they actually learn while you're out there with them. So, yeah.
Through all that, I don't know, you're more than probably aware, but on Thursdays, your achieve program, we've been approached about maybe working about the, talking to children about environment and things like that.
Year, next year? Yeah, I'd probably be teaching a course again, so.
Really? Damon, Damon, I think it's Damon, yeah.
So we'll say fingers crossed. We'll try to figure it out.
So I like that. At Shram.
And at Shram, so I'm the coordinator at Shram, and I've been focused on bringing in groups from the community. So the Rotary's come a couple times, of course. The Bahai Community came for their Nahuas celebration. I've worked, and I'm very open to others. I'm really looking for Girl Scouts, hint. But, and it's just, it's wonderful. I took over just after the tragedy last year. Effie Levner was the coordinator before me, and she had moved recently, and it was just a good time for change. So I came on and I've been trying to make it fun over there, like really remind people of what an asset that park is. It is an absolutely beautiful facility. And so then, after the senior skip day situation that we had, that next weekend, I had already had an Arbor Day or an Arbor Day program scheduled. And we worked with our local venture crew. And they came through and cleaned up the park. And they did a walk through the whole thing, picked up as much trash as they could find. And I was just so thrilled to be able to have Greenbelt youth doing what Greenbelters do and being of service to our community while, you know, the press and everything was crazy and our kids are going through a lot. And it was nice to have some of our local kids showing that they love our community and doing what Greenbelt is all about. So I'm honored to be the coordinator over there. Thank you.
Yeah, we have a lot of energy.
Maybe I'll just mention some of the other projects that we have.
I just want to say, my favorite one of the Three Sisters Garden is the center, Spring Hill Lake, and Shram Hills.
You did that well, because I was going to say, wait a minute.
And they're each different, you know?
They are, they are.
They've evolved differently. We started out with basically the same design in each of them, and they've evolved. And they should have their own character. But hopefully, they, you know, the original goal was to bring the different areas together on a common project. So, and that's not, it's not always that easy to do that. I mean, but I think we've done some things.
Did stop by the center garden this Sunday, and it looks great.
Yeah.
And with all the, you know, the press and everything at Shram Hills Park, you know, I couldn't help just look around at how beautiful the park is. And everybody's focused in on this terrible thing, but we've got this beautiful asset. The kids were out there playing soccer as people were talking.
And we had a, we had a seed swap there as a partnership with a couple other organizations. I saw Kirsten there. And that was great. I mean, that park is perfect for large events and people want to use it. And so Cheers really has been doing our best to make use.
Kites, that was a good day. It was a good day. It was a good day for kite flying.
That was probably my sixth kite event here in Greenbelt, and it was the first time that the weather was just perfect. I was so glad because Shram needs it. I mean...
Tell me about the healing, the healing and work.
Oh, I'm very interested in doing more events there to encourage community building, especially with the youth. We're looking at doing an event this summer that's youth-focused, peace-focused, and fun-focused. So that's still coming together. If any of you have ideas, let me know. Or like resources, let me know. But, yeah, I think we have a lot of opportunity in all of this craziness, so.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna just talk about some of the other projects of Cheers. Bill, do you want to say some more about the gardens before I do that? Go ahead, go ahead. Bill is our strong, abiding, wise presence, I would say. And our healer.
Actually, what I like to say about the gardens, all three of them, it's a unique program as far as I can see anywhere, where there are three gardens who are related to each other, but not exactly the same. And I think that the opportunities that people in Greenbelt have to come to these gardens, plant and harvest their own plants, I think it's unique and I really like it. And so, and I would like to promote more of it.
It's powerful. Well said. Well said.
Can I ask a question?
All right.
Can I just ask a quick question? I know that maybe last year or two years ago, the statue at the Spring Hill Lake Garden, did you have some issues with it? Because I believe it needed to be like restored or has that been taken care of? Had to be replaced?
There was some damage to it and it had to be replaced.
From the weather, not, not the annuals?
Weather day, oh.
Made out wood.
Yeah. Yeah, because we want to say that, because now, now that we've engaged, we've been for the last two years, Bill and I, just engaging the community, making children ownership. You know, our buckets, if we're going to be quite candid, they used to take our 25 buckets and throw them all throughout the gardens and whatever. Now, for the last six to eight months, they're perfectly, they're in the shed because we're, hey, come on, we need you. We need you to do this. You know, they're in... You know, and then we give snacks and the children love snacks. And, and so that's the whole idea. That's what I love about Cheers is the engagement, but also about Green Belt. You know, we're kind of, we're a mega for volunteerism and we kind of engage each other. And, and I love Cheers because the three, it's intentional, three parts of the city. Where can you, where can you go? You know, three, you laid that foundation, and so.
You have to teach them about community, that they're part of a community.
Yes, absolutely.
And what better way to do it? Like to engage them, you know, hands-on, to teach them.
Preventive.
Yeah, but I did remember the styles, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, it was weathered and it, so the artist did another one and we were able to raise the funds for that.
And it's colorful.
I think I've, you know, I've been over there, but I didn't, I didn't realize and it just popped in my head that there was an issue, so I just wanted to make sure that was resolved.
I just want to mention a couple of the other projects. Of course, the Green Man Festival, which is coming next weekend. We have another project called Flows, which links the Earth Squad students and with some students in Guatemala. We've had a couple of grants from the Chesapeake Bay Trust. One is a seed project, another a citizen science project. We also have a project at a farm in Pennsylvania. And we just recently completed an analog forestry course, training course that we did with the International Analog Forestry Network and.
I think that's the first time that this type of, that type of program has been offered in North America. It was very progressive for us to have it here. It's being, it's a concept that's fairly new and it's being brought into the different continents. And so we were able to provide both online participation, which was internationally attended, and then in-person at Bowie State. I'm sorry, Maggie.
No, really, thank you, thank you. Bowie State was wonderful. They gave us their beautiful space to hold the workshop. They provided all the food for the workshop. It was really a good partnership and we hope we can continue to do some things in that area. The other thing that I want to mention, can we go to the next slide? This is a collage of our stuff, but go to the next one. We have projects that come and go, and I wanted to mention that a key project that we had was G-CAN, which has kind of been laid down as an active project, but many of the same things that G-CAN was doing have gone into other projects that we're doing. And then let's go to the next one. I really want to talk about this one. This is, this is something, it's called Coming Together to Support the Great Food Transition for Climate Justice, Health, and Equity. We got a small grant from the Green Belt Community Foundation to, to have people be trained and certified to be able to use the Green Belt Commercial Kitchen. And we're, I'm very happy to say that we just kind of jumped through the hoops that were set for us. The insurance ones, getting a person Geraldine Adams is certified for Safe Serve, and we hope to get more people. And so I'm excited about this project. I think it can be potentially a really good project whose goal it is, is to foster planted health and people health through eating more low-impact environmentally high-health and low-impact foods, so.
That's really exciting. I think that our commercial kitchen could be utilized a little bit more. So you've worked out a schedule, you'll be there on Tuesdays or Thursdays or something?
You know, we had to do certain things to meet the requirements. We had to satisfy the community center that we had insurance. We also had to have somebody train and certify as a Safe Serve food manager. And we always have to have a food manager certified present when we work in the kitchen. So our first, the first thing that we're doing, we're having sort of a, the Food for Life, Geraldine Adams teaches that course, and she's offering it in six sessions in May and June. And, but we're also partnering with the Ojama Cooperative Farming Alliance, and they, they're a seed, they foster using heritage seeds. And they are interested in using the kitchen to develop some value-added heritage things. So we're excited about the partnership. And we have the partnership of, you can see Green Belt Rotary connecting across Green Belt, Ojama, East Coast, and Food for Life. So this is a real partnership. We have this grant and all the partners are contributing more money to it, so we're matching the funds. So we're excited about starting this and hopefully it'll.
We start the first, next Wednesday, the 15th, 17 o'clock, first class.
Okay, council member.
That was actually going to be my question, it's one that I knew, I had talked to Geraldine about the Food for Life courses and she was really excited. So I was just wondering when the first one was, then you answered that question for me before I even got to ask it.
For court, 15th is kind of a dry run where people see that her actual course is the 22nd.
22nd?
Yeah, so, and Wednesday night, and then.
You know, it's just so exciting every year when you come and you talk to council, and really not just talking to council, but it's exciting to see what Cheers does throughout the year. Because what I consistently see is a real emphasis on collaboration, unifying the city, and almost a lot of partnerships. So you've applied to continue as a recognition group. I don't know, what did the review committee, what did they have to say?
Cheers is a basic certification. They don't get any financial support from the city, just a lot of in-kind services. And we don't bring a lot, a lot of the, we don't bring a lot of the organizations that get just in-kind services, but Cheers is one of them who we think council would like to hear. All the great things that they do throughout the year.
Yeah, I think you guys are doing great, great things. When's the next cleanup over in Shram Hills?
We'll let you know.
You'll be the first one they call, Emmett.
No, but we're developing that schedule, I'm glad to hear that, because we are developing.
You know, I love to come out and help.
But what, okay, does he pick up a shovel?
Yes, he does.
I do.
Actually, I think almost everybody here on council has, has come many times. And we really appreciate it, because it really, it lends some legitimacy to our, to our pleas.
So it's, it's good that you go.
Council member. Any goals to expand the Earth Squad?
Please?
Any goals to expand the Earth Squad?
We'd love to see one at every garden. That was the initial idea, we're just not quite there.
Great.
Okay.
But, but we, but now that we have dedicated coordinators, no, no, really, because, because I, we want to, Geraldine has brought, has a partnership with the nursery school. That sometimes she brings the children over to Center Gardens, so it's quietly. The only, only reason you hear so much about the west side is because it's already established. I had a contact, a principal, we were friends over at Magnolia, but I believe she retired, remember? And, and so my, when I came on, I saw Earth Squad in every garden. And that would be just bringing in everyone. And I know that over there across from Eleanor Roosevelt, where they built the new, there's a division, a complex there, that they have a trail, I think, that leads to Shram.
Yeah, there's a, there's a trail.
Is it, was, I can't think of where they, didn't you guys dedicate the building or something?
There's a, there's a small trail back behind, between Greenbrier Phase III and Glen Oaks Apartments.
Yeah, that's what I thought, and I said.
And there's some community gardens back there too.
Yeah, there is. But, but to be easy access to Shram, so we're working. But now that we have Jennifer and she's just, you know, she's getting her feet wet, a lot of things going on.
Yeah, I see, I see groups like Beltway Montessori that are doing homeschool here in Greenbelt as a great idea for an Earth Squad partnership there, but it hasn't developed yet, so stay tuned.
I guess the transportation is a little challenging. I mean, at Spring Hill Lake, you can just walk them right over. You don't even have to cross the street, you just go, you know, back there, which is very convenient. But if you go like somewhere else and you have to cross major roadways and et cetera, that, that might be a little bit more challenging and, you know.
I think a partnership with an individual school or maybe a Girl Scout troop or a Boy Scout troop. I mean, I think, I think we need another entity. Like at Spring Hill Lake Elementary School, we know that that's kind of our, our base for the Earth Squad, whereas we don't, we haven't established that at the other gardens.
Dr. Stag over at Magnolia Elementary School, she was the assistant principal at Green Belt Elementary School for many years. She's the principal over there now, so.
She's awesome.
She's awesome.
Or a garden or something.
Thank you.
You know, we in the school, we have the butterfly garden and, you know, and then the other garden inside, so they're doing some things there as well. So, so we're pretty lucky.
Thank you so much, thank you for your good work. Okay, moving on, let's see, it's the Green Belt Boys and Girls Club. Is Orin, is he online?
I don't see, I don't see him online.
Oh, shame on him.
No, I don't think we have.
Okay, well, we'll have to move on, and if they come on, we'll see if we can work them in. Who's up next? I see that the space is here.
Green Belt Arts Center comes next.
Okay, and Carol Shaw is online. Hey, Carol Shaw, how are you? And.
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, nice to see you tonight.
Well, it's good to see you all.
And Bob Kleinberg.
Hey, Bob, how are you?
Okay, how are you, Sarah?
Not too bad, not too bad, Bill. Welcome, you know, we appreciate you being here. We appreciate all of the cultural programs that go on there at the Arts Center. Do you want to talk a little bit about what's coming up for the current year? And, you know, you've asked for, it's a contribution operating grant, so it's $43,275. So do you want to talk a little bit about where you're at and where you're going for the next year?
Love to have the opportunity. We have a little slideshow, if you'll let me do the, if I can do the.
Share screen, can we, can you share the screen? Okay, give it a try.
I'm going to give it a try.
Yeah.
Hang on a sec.
There you go.
Got it?
Got it.
Good, glad, well, good to see you all. I thank the opportunity to chat. A little bit about myself, I'm Bob Kleinberg. I've been with GAC since about 1998. I've been a performer, a director, and a member of the Board of Directors. I'm currently serving as the admin VP and currently acting president while our current president takes a leave of absence. As a performer, director, audience member, I've experienced and appreciate the positive impact the city's generosity on the presentation of performance and fine arts to the residents of the City of Greenbelt and the surrounding area. Carol Shaw, who's also online, has been active at GAC for the last 10 years, is the box office front of house chairperson, member of the Board of Directors, and currently our treasurer. So any bucks question, go to her. I'm literally passing the buck.
Okay. So can, can you talk a little, okay, keep going.
Are we there?
Yes.
Okay. Our mission is to provide a dedicated, sustainable entertainment and educational hub for fine and performing arts that enriches the life and cultural heritage of Greenbelt and surrounding communities. Now, thanks to the support of Green, the City of Greenbelt, we managed to weather the storm of COVID and in this year commenced a full year of programming, whose focus has been on reawaking the awareness of the interconnectedness of people as well as the continuing human need for expression. And while audiences and actors had initially been slow to return to the theater, we are seeing proof that our joint commitment to the arts is bearing fruit with the completion of several highly successful productions. So we look forward to continuing to building on our mission and moving forward with a purpose born out of our Be at GAC initiative. So what is Be at GAC? I want to go backwards, sorry, went too far. Be at GAC. It reflects our belief that our mission must translate into actions of belonging, equity, and expansion. And belonging means that each one of us is treated equally and fairly. It feels, feels like a full member of the larger community and can thrive within it. Equity means that we as a organization must work to remove barriers to access for members of our community, whether those barriers have to do with one's finances, lack of experience with that art form, transportation, childcare, or any number of barriers that we might not yet even be aware of. Expansion means that we focus on the outcome of growing our community and nurturing the voices and expression of all of its members. Art makers, theater makers in particular, create new worlds as a matter of practice. Why shouldn't be the one, be the ones that change what we want to be in the world? Now, thanks to the City of Greenbelt's support, in this past year, we have provided a wide range of artistic opportunities encompassing programming that range from the lighthearted musicals to intellectually challenging productions that address contemporary and historical issues. Our space was home to subjects as delightful as The Patchwork Girl of Oz, and merrily we roll along, as well as educational and insightful experiences such as Miss Story's Living History and The Mountain Top. We have opened our spaces to various partners, such as the Rude Mechanicals, the Chromatics Acapella Group, a magician, and even a fundraising performance by world-renowned guitarist Bill Frisell. And we'll be closing our season with Five Play, a world premiere production written by local playwright Erica Smith. Our efforts do not go unnoticed. While none of the nominees you see won their respective awards, it is a tremendous honor and achievement to even be nominated. It is a testament to the generosity of the City of Greenbelt that these folks even have an opportunity to achieve these nominations. So there were nominations for Outstanding Director in a Play, Lead Actor, Lead Actress in Sound Design, and that is a fantastic achievement. We walk the walk and we will continue to do so. We produce shows of inclusiveness with musicals of A Man of No Importance, which just closed. It was a fantastic run, very enjoyable show, and merrily we roll along, another very enjoyable show. GAC provided theater space for a variety of one-time shows for guest theater productions, just as Miss Story's Living History, which highlighted Black women from history, and a magic show written and performed by Christopher DePompis. Our Green Belt Arts Center lobby provides local artists with a venue for their works, and we change them monthly, attempting to coordinate the artwork, if possible, with our productions. This year, thanks to funds from American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, we have been able to give access to our theater to people with mobility limitations. As you can see, we've been able to do a few things. We made the theater accessible for everyone. Because of our ARPA grant and our dedicated membership, we are able to install a permanent ramp from the dressing room to the stage, procure an evacuation chair for emergency exit, and procure a removable ramp for use between our green room and the dressing room, thus giving complete end-to-end access for limited mobility actors. Where are we going next? Well, we are, our season's not yet cast in stone. We'll be voting on the resident productions tomorrow, and next month we'll be choosing, voting on our guest productions. But I can say we are looking forward to a mix of accessible popular plays, classic theater staged by the Rude Mechanicals, as well as giving local theater troops and playwrights the opportunity to showcase their work. We've added improv workshops and plan to survey the local theater community to develop specific workshops based upon their interests. And we will continue to focus on our Be at GAC initiative this season, thereby reinforcing our core belief that GAC must be a welcoming space for everyone, regardless of age, gender, sexual orientation, race, physical ability, or experience. The productions and classes that we offer are our programming and unfortunately cannot be the financial sustenance of our organization unless we continue to look to grants to support us in meeting our mission. We will continue to draw on our remaining ARPA grant funds to improve the usability and flexibility of our space, but is your support that we need the most? As Greenbelt's only live theater, GAC programming provides opportunities for hundreds of Greenbelt citizens to actively participate in, attend, and learn about theater. And the city's support allows us to meet the financial responsibilities of rent, utilities, and staffing. thus enabling us to continue to provide these opportunities to Greenbelters. That's the end of my formal presentation, and we thank you for your time and look forward to your continued support.
No, no, thank you so much for the presentation. It's very, very informative. Thank you for the work that you're doing. So, Bob, so you mentioned that you're, you're the, filling in as the acting director while the, the president, acting president while, while Ms. Hawk is on sabbatical, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, she's on travel or something like that?
Well, she's had to take medical leave.
Medical leave, okay.
So I've had to, had to jump in and be in the Admin VP. It is my duty, one of the unwritten duties there, but to fill in and take, to take care of things while she is unable to perform as president.
Okay.
Around a while, so it's not like this is, I'm not like a spring chicken here. I've been Admin VP for eight years.
So there have been some changes on your board over the past year or two, is that correct?
Yes, it has. We, we each, the GAC board is made up of nine members, and each member serves a two-year term. Now, we alternate elections. Each year, we choose four or five, depending upon the year, board members. And so each year, there's bound to be turnover as people decide to move on to other things because, you know, personal time, it's a volunteer thing.
Yeah.
Other priorities. And so, of course, we've had, we've had new people step into the board. We've had two new board members, Linda Thompson and Sweden, step in this year as new at-large members. Kate took on, I'm not mentioning last names because they're going past me so quickly, as secretary. And, and Wes then is taking on VP last year, VP Programming last year.
Very good, very good. Hey, I, I was wondering, you, you mentioned the productions, and you're going to vote the resident versus the, the guest productions. Can you
Correct.
just quickly kind of explain that dichotomy, or how, how does that, in terms of productions that, that start here in Greenbelt with Greenbelters as opposed to, you know, visiting companies? How does that work?
Resident productions are productions that are produced by the Greenbelt Arts Center. In other words, we are the ones that fund them, fund them, support the, the, the purchase of staging, of, 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 of costuming, scripts, provide the materials necessary to, you know, set the stage. And so in those, in resident productions, we take all the risk and we get all the money. Guest productions are, are productions that we share the, the work with. The guest production are, will come in and they will produce the show, and we will split the, split the proceeds with them.
Right, right. And I guess as far as the, the actors and the folks involved with the production, those, those are all sort of open auditions. So, you know, if I want to come over and audition for a leading man part, someone who's handsome and dynamic, I can certainly do that. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, you may. In fact, we probably have another show coming up this season. You might, we, everybody is welcome.
Have to talk to my agent, though.
Oh, okay, well, if you're equity, we can. Anyway, so, yeah, so I invite out, I invite everybody to come out and audition for any show that is possible. And our, for the most part, unless there are specific parts that have to be done by certain gender or makeup or, for, for reasons that the casting has to be specific, every, every position is open to anybody.
If my memory serves me correctly, it may have been four or five years ago, but former council member Jay Davis did a walk-on part in The Wizard of Oz. I believe she was the wicked witch of the West. Seriously.
Hopefully that was not my.
No, 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 she, she had a broom.
Oh, yeah, we had a, we did, definitely had a broom.
Well, maybe not the wicked, but, but, hey, all kidding aside, though, you know, the, the productions are great. I like the collaborations. You mentioned the art gallery, and a couple of years ago, during Black History Month, you, you kind of allowed to, to curate parts, an exhibition on the art gallery walls. I was over there for the Bill Frisell concert, which was great. It was just phenomenal seeing a world-renowned guitarist right here in Greenbelt. Of course, we have wonderful musicians all the time, but that was pretty special.
I was up there, up in the booth.
That's great. Hey, Carol Shaw, I was looking at the budget, and I got a couple of questions. Are you there, Carol?
I'm here.
Okay, so it looks like the, the ARPA grant last year really helped out, big difference there. But just looking at the reserves you're, you're carrying between your restricted funds and the checking account and whatnot, you've got a pretty good, healthy reserves, although they're down. So you've got about sixty-five thousand in the bank?
Right. About forty thousand of that is restricted. And then several years ago, they wanted to create what we call the rainy day fund. And that was because, you know, we were like paycheck to paycheck kind of, in fact, less than that, really facing financial obstacles. So, you know, the plan was to, you know, get a cushion so that when we weren't faced, you know, we'd have that cushion if we ever face those obstacles again. We also have a sound fund to build up to buy some new sound equipment and some new speakers and that kind of thing. So, all of the funds that are in our reserves are basically, even though some of them are unrestricted, they are being saved for specific things. We have a fund for Norma Osmer. I'm sorry, Bob, I'm not pronouncing her name right.
Set up a quest or something?
And, you know, her fund is restricted unless we absolutely need something. We're trying to make sure we have that cushion so that we don't end up in the position we were before where, you know, we were basically, you know, making every penny scream.
Right. So the ARPA grant helped. That was for twenty-five thousand dollars last year. And, but you still kind of came out in a little bit of a deficit. How, just in terms of the ticket office and attendance, has it recovered? Or is it still kind of picking up?
It is, it is recovering. The last, this, just this past show, Man of No Importance, has done very, was very successful. The musicals are much more successful than the others. Merrily Roll Along was also very successful, even though due to COVID, we had to cancel three performances. You know, we do offer like Five Play coming up. It's a local playwright. And those shows are unknown, so it's hard to make a lot of money on a show that people have not heard of before. So I, we try to make that mix of shows that will attract the largest audience and shows that allow local artists to showcase their work. And like the Rude Mechanicals, that's a local troupe. And they are popular in some senses, but again, we probably average twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars net per show if we're, if we're lucky.
Yeah. How, if I could ask, how, how's the relationship with the landlord coming along? I, I guess your, your costumes, you've got them stored over in the community center?
No longer. We had to, in fact, that's one of the increases in our expenses is we had to get out of that space in January, and we've had, you know, like two or three rent increases to the place we store them now. So that was a, an expense we had to take on, we weren't expecting.
A space is definitely at a premium, and, and the community center and most of our Greenbelt facilities are busting at the seams, so it's really hard. Counsel, do you have questions?
I think the major, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say the major thing with the ARPA grant that has been helpful to us is, is making our space accessible. You know, for Encore, you know, the summer camp coming up, there is a child in a wheelchair, and it was very important to make the space totally accessible.
That's a powerful use of those funds. And you know, the city still has a few nonprofit grant funds available through the ARPA project. I don't, you're probably looking at those, or are you looking at applying?
Well, to tell you the truth, this is the first I've heard of them, so I'll talk to you about it later then. We'll look at applying.
Contact the city manager, Tim George, and he can tell you about it.
Okay.
Okay, Counsel.
I just want to say another thing is, we are, another, another major expense on the safety line is we're, you know, we're, we're really focusing on the safety aspect of the theater. So we're bringing in electrician to add and move exit signs. You know, we have other electrical work to do to, it's safe now, but we want to make it safer. So those are some, those are the kind of things that are, you know, the facility cost, which really costs you the most. And, but you absolutely need to have the safety, you need to have it, you know, be a space that people enjoy being in.
Safety first, no doubt. Hey, well, thank you for your good work. If Counsel has no further questions, appreciate what you're doing. What, what's the next production coming up?
Five Play is the next one coming. No, actually, we have the, the one act fest, the one act festival, the weekend.
It starts this Friday.
This Friday? And how much are tickets?
Tickets are twenty-two dollars for seniors and twenty-four dollars for adults and twelve dollars for students and youth.
And, and how much is a membership?
Well, I, anyone, any donation as a member, memberships at twenty-five dollars start receiving the benefits of comp tickets.
Okay. Oh, you, you, you make a contribution, twenty-five dollars or above, like a hundred dollars, and, and you get comp tickets?
Yes. I mean, various levels, but yes. I mean, we have to give some kind of benefit to people for being a member. And that is the best benefit, you know, to have them come see the shows.
Just asking. Hey, thank you so much. Appreciate your good work.
Well, thank you so much for supporting us. It's absolutely necessary for us.
Okay, have a good evening. Thank you.
Thanks.
See, so we need to move on. The space is here at some point. I don't, Coach K, would you be prepared to talk about Greenbelt Boys and Girls Club? Orin, Orin Howard is supposed to be here. Yeah, but for, for right now?
I guess I could.
Yeah, well, let's go to the space now because that, there, it's time for them, but if you want to, to speak a little bit, you certainly can. Okay, pull up chair in the hot seats.
Right.
Yeah.
Guards, everybody.
Excellent. K. Welcome. It's great to have you here tonight. Uh, thank you for applying once again for an operating grant from the City of Greenbelt. So tell us a little bit, I think everybody here on Counsel is familiar with the space, but there might be someone who's watching on cable TV or YouTube or, or Facebook or someone who's, who's not. So talk a little bit about what you're doing.
Absolutely. So, well, I'm Shreemar Higgs, the founder of the Space for Art for All, which the name started, stands for sharing positive artistic and creative energies. It was started in two thousand eighteen as a pop-up art space just to provide arts activities, access and opportunities to people within the community, specifically in Greenbelt West, which is just like, like much more underserved than the rest of the City of Greenbelt and have like lack of access to these kind of resources that are available inside of West, I mean, excuse me, inside of old Greenbelt, hysterical Greenbelt. So, yeah, we opened in two thousand and eighteen, and since then, we've had several, several partnerships. We've, like, right now, we're able to have these programs. We're doing yoga, ukulele, keyboarding, capoeira, drum circles.
At the same time?
Uh, sure, depends on the day, no. No, so Wednesday through Sunday, we have classes. So with our new program, which is the Revolutionary Self-Care, it is designed to just provide access, again, opportunity for people to like break down these barriers of what it looks like with, for mental health, like creating these safe spaces and opportunities and access for therapeutic coping and community skills, you know, excuse me, coping strategies and community building. So, yeah, the space we've been there since making magic.
Yeah, how's that working out? You've kind of evolved from the, the one space next to the movie theater to the cafe next door, and then the move upstairs, but actually those spaces downstairs. So it's really three separate locations there at Beltway Plaza.
Yeah, so we do have three. Started out as the one pop-up, pop-up spot inside of Beltway Plaza in front of the movies. And then in two thousand twenty-one, we opened up the Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi lounge, and it's like community living room that we have for Beltway Plaza. You all, some of you have come for some good coffee in that place. And then we opened up the, we started using the space upstairs, which is the former Big Lots. And that's allowed us to have like so many more activities, provided us to have like many more programs that, and the space downstairs, which is about four hundred and like ninety square feet, so we were only allowed with so many people. And then upstairs, like I said, we were able to provide all of these programs, more partners, and programming literally all year round.
And so what do you have coming up in the near future?
Well, we just had Free Comic Book Day, three hundred and fifty, no, three hundred and twenty-eight people that we had counted for like getting free comics, hundreds of free comic books. We still have more, and that was this past weekend. What do we have coming up? So we have, we're getting ready for our summer series. So we have our partner Playtime Project, and they come out every Wednesday, and they provide free arts programming and just like community, again, like for parents or mothers that are like coming from the different homeless shelters. So they provide access and opportunities, so again, so that the parents can have space to come together, and so the youth can also have time to play. So that's every Wednesday, and so they have their summer camp is coming up. They're gonna be in our space. And then we also look, look forward to our like graffiti, street art series. Some of you also were at our event this past weekend at the community center. So we're gonna like just transition that on over to the space. We have a bunch of wall space inside of the upper space and Big Lots, so we're gonna transform that a little bit.
Yeah, I, I saw a part of the, the arts program on Sunday. I saw Councilmember Pompey. She was working on a piece. I couldn't understand it. I was looking at it.
Oh, yeah.
She was trying to explain it to me.
She did an amazing job. And, you know, again, when I create art spaces or create like classroom spaces, it's about like exploration, and I think, again, you did a really great job of just like having fun. I like just move, move color, have fun with it, don't think about it, just like, you know, be with the color, be with the paint, be with the activity. So, yeah, it's just creating these, these places and spaces. So I, like I said, I've seen each of you at least one of, at least one of you.
Did you finish that piece, or is it, are you still working on it?
I did. I finished it.
You sure it's finished?
I mean, I, it was funny because I, it was really hard to finish. I was talking to the person next to me, and it's like, you kind of just want to keep doing one more thing.
Is it ever really finished?
Is it ever finished?
So you can just come to a class on Saturday, add some collage work to it, and just keep on building every weekend.
Yeah, it was very fun, though. So I know you're doing that class again, and I highly recommend it. Yeah, it was just, it was fun, and it was great to see all the, the kids, like the various ages, like they were teenagers, they were little kids, they were, I mean, it was really like very multi-generational. It was, it was just a really great activity, really fun. Yeah.
Hey, I wanted to ask you about partnerships. I know that you, you have a fair number of partnerships, and you've got a corporate partner that's coming to do some community work or something? That, that accounting firm that comes and.
Oh, Deloitte. Oh, my gosh. Yes, my beautiful people at Deloitte. Thank you for mentioning Impact Day. That's on my list. So, June, Friday, June seventh? We were, we were selected again by Deloitte, which is the like technology consultation firm. And for Impact Day, they choose one nonprofit organization a year to do their community, like outreach project. Last year, they came out and they did what we call Full Steam Hit two point oh. They had robots, drones, AI art-making, three D video picture, all that's good stuff, the fun things. And then this year, we were selected again, what we're calling Snap Camp, which is Sustainability Nutrition and Arts Playground. And so what we're gonna have, sumo wrestlers, we have them like lined up already, so you can like get a.
Sumo wrestlers with, with blow-up sumo thing.
These are real humans. No, no blow-up, no blow-up suits involved. And, yeah, we're gonna have sumo wrestlers, so not only will we be able to like watch, but you'll all also be able to do like a demonstration. You'll be like be involved with the demonstration. We have a local, some local farms coming in to do some demonstrations, nutritionists coming out to like just show different. Uh, nutritionists coming out to like just show different ways that you can use some of the fruits and vegetables because we're really looking at the, excuse me, sustainability, nutrition, and again, the arts. So it's gonna be based on like the different elements and, uh, five or six different activities that anyone, uh, it starts at nine AM, it's at twelve thirty.
Kids from, uh, the middle school or?
All ages. We've reached out to, uh, major, like about ninety percent of the schools in the area. Um, I think there were like a few more on that, look on the outskirts that we were reaching out to. But yeah, we reached out to majority of the schools. Uh, if anyone else have contacts or, you know, have anyone that they, you know, have direct to, that I have all the contact information for Deloitte. Uh, we're working, you know, excuse me, we're really excited for them to come back again this year because, uh, it was such a huge thing last year. Uh, people are still talking about it. Again, you were there.
I popped in over there and I was talking to the chair or the person, the coordinator from Deloitte. And he's based over in Arlington. He's a graduate of Roosevelt High School. So he's very familiar with, with Beltway Plaza and Greenbelt, so.
Yeah, he actually skipped one of his, uh, like conferences to come to the event last year, which was really amazing. Uh, because he heard he was, it was right here in his old backyard. Uh, but yeah, like the, the company, they are really, really dedicated to making sure that like we were able to continue the services also. So everything they bring to their programs, we're able to keep those and, and continue it on for the rest of the year.
Yeah, I, I know one of, one of your priorities, uh, over the years has been trying to, you know, just diversify your funding streams and, and, uh, you know, through grants seeking and partnerships kind of just come up with a mix that, that's, uh, very sustainable. So I, and I know that Robert Rand, being the, the person that he is, is laser focused on trying to, to, to build that sustainable budget. So how's that coming along? And I specifically, you know, have you reached out to the Prince George's County Arts Council and the Prince George's County Humanities Council? And, uh, you know, the county, our county council members and county executives, they've got funds. You just have to ask, of course.
We, uh, we did get a, we got a grant from the Maryland State Art Council, which is very helpful for us. We will be reaching out for the council funds, um, uh, with, if we get this grant, because we need matching funds to, uh, so that we're kind of reserving that. Yeah, the, uh, continued revenue stream is, uh, is challenging. Um, so we're, we're trying a mix of grant writing and also, um, fundraising and also, uh, income from program, program events.
Have you got memberships? If someone wants to be a member of the space?
Do not have that in place. That's, uh, that's something we might consider.
We, we've discussed that in like past, like board situations. We'll talk about that. Yeah, we can bring that up in the next board meeting. But, uh, yeah, it's just the, the way that our structure is kind of set up that, uh, yeah.
And we're, I, I should say, we're very grateful to the city for the, the, uh, the grants that made these programs possible. We get a project, um, a recognition group project grant last year as well as an ARPA fund grant. So that was really the life, the lifeblood that, that created this, uh, this programming that, that we have now. And as the funding runs out, we're very hopeful that this new funding from the, um, the operating grant will allow us to continue, continue these programs.
Yeah. Well, so looking back over the past three years, back to twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, you know, your, your uh, expenses have just about doubled. Uh, so your income, uh, has also just about doubled, so.
Well, that, yeah, not quite. We, we, um, are hoping to see some increases this year and next year in the, in the income. Yeah. I, I should note that Shaimar's been very generous and donating most of his time. So that's, uh, that's something that we're looking at.
Hey, Greg Varn, what, what does the review committee have to say about this application?
I'll actually ask, uh, my colleague Nicole DeWolff to.
Nicole DeWolff, Nicole, are you there?
Yes, I am. I'll be happy to take that one.
Okay, please.
The, the reviewers, uh, expressed that there's great community engagement with the programs of the space, that they're reaching audiences that otherwise would not participate in Greenbelt events. They lauded the dedicated volunteers. Um, they did, uh, sort of share your question about, uh, income streams. They did note that they felt the request was high for this year, uh, but that they did appreciate the focus of the organization on increasing revenue from additional sources. Again, to provide some of that stability you were referring to. Uh, they commented that the space does so much great work with whatever budget they have, uh, and scored them in the very good, excellent range.
Okay, and you know, our support has gone up significantly, but it seems like, uh, your other sources. Hey, just looking at the budget there, so you got some restricted, restricted operating funds. Uh, so what's that, what's that for?
We actually have a lot of, the, the ARPA grant was a restricted grant as well as the, the project. We also have, um, um, we're asking, we're, um, working as the fiscal sponsor for the communications and outreach program, the, the ARPA program. So, yeah, that's, um. It's coming along fairly well. We, we, I had a conversation with, um, Nirvan tonight. Yeah, it's happened. He's, uh, covered about a hundred doors and keeps on going, so, yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, yes, it's, uh.
What material, does he have, uh, I, I'd be curious to see his tool or whatever he's using.
I didn't bring extra, I brought like what I had on my desk.
It's kind of a tangent, but just, I think.
Yeah, and I can share that. I can send that over to everyone. That's what I was just sitting on my desk.
Um, he talked about it a little bit at the, um, the Peace and Justice Coalition meeting over the weekend that a few of us were at.
Well, I can, I can send it over to everyone after this meeting if, if that's okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't listened the first time.
Seeing it too. It's great. It looks good.
Kane, yes, Mayor Portem.
Well, I was just gonna comment that although the, the, the dollar value is high, I think it's actually the lowest dollar per, like lowest investment per attendee of any of the requests that we got. Um, if you look at the, uh, request per, per player or participant, um, I think it was actually the lowest calculated based on the, 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 the number of people that you all are reaching over there. Um, so while it seems like a higher dollar value compared to many of the, the others, except for, I think, the, uh, Greenbelt Arts Center, it actually is reaching, I think, a lot more people, uh, than, than many of the other programs are. So I think that's something important to keep in mind in, in comparing the, the, the funding levels for the different requests that we got.
And if I, uh, also, excuse me, with the classes, uh, what I've noticed is that it, not only does it bring the people from like West Greenbelt, but it also brings people from the like, you know, it's, it's, excuse me, it's historic Greenbelt, getting used to the historic old Greenbelt. Uh, people from the, from historic Greenbelt to come to, uh, West Greenbelt also and like just mingle and, and share space together. And that's something that I think that's really, really, uh, invaluable because you don't really get that much the other way around, uh, when it comes to like value to the city, uh, so.
This is a lot of programming that you've got going on.
Oh my gosh.
There's a lot of things happening and I think it is.
That's only regular.
Well, and I think because we lack, I mean, when we just have Spring Hill Lake Rec Center in the West, there's just not a lot of space to do programming. And I think by having your space and the arrangement that you've made with Beltway Plaza to have that space, I mean, that just magnifies so much our ability to, to, you know, tangentially, um, provide, since it's not, I mean, it's sort of, some of it is direct city funding, some of it is your hard work, but, um, provide some of these, these classes and other things that we wouldn't have a place to do otherwise.
Any thoughts about, uh, trying to share some of the programming in the eastern part of the city?
Uh, yeah, so that's definitely been part of conversation of figuring out like, how do we navigate in that direction of continuing this like connection? So that's something that we're also like Nirvan and I have been in communication with this, uh, community outreach project to see how that, like, if we can incorporate that kind of thought process into, or that kind of research into the, the work that they're doing with their outreach.
Small building where there's no staff or anything, but there is a small.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's gonna always come down to capacity for us as far as volunteers and just, you know, people that work with us because we don't have the like finances for that.
Councilmember McKinney.
I just also want to say thank you because I don't think one thing that's reflected here is that you go beyond just your organization. Um, we met with Playtime and they talked about how you are donating some of your space so that they can also be in the space as well. So that's reaching even further beyond the programming that you're doing. So that's awesome.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm definitely blessed for that project. Um, and also Fred Wine, if I must, the, you know, president of Quantum. Yeah, yeah, he's been really gracious to us and which is why we've been able to like stay open all this time for the last five years. Um, but, uh, yeah, that's definitely, yeah, thank you.
Well, fantastic. If there are no other questions from you, oh, then Councilmember.
Um, I just wanted to say I appreciate, number one, it, the, the clear growth that your organization has undergone in the past several years. Like it's clear that you are growing every year, doing more every year. And that's, I love to see that in an organization. And I love how intentional you are, um, about collaborating with other groups and other organizations. And I just think that, you know, that makes our city stronger, that makes the space stronger, that makes all of us stronger. So I just appreciate how intentional you are about that. So thanks for that work.
I just want to echo that too, because I remember from your first little space you had in there, you know, and now compare some years later, what, what you made of it is just absolutely fantastic. It's amazing. You're just amazing. You're just a wonderful person.
Thank you. I have to get you a copy of that photo of you on the skateboard.
Hey, uh, so are you still accepting, uh, donations of books or clothing or what it was?
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Musical instruments?
Anything, yes, anything that you would give to Goodwill, we will take that donation. And we have these beautiful new, like donation, like thank you slips, thank you forms. But yes, yeah, new receipts, they're really gorgeous. Um, but yeah, we, uh, we take, anything that you would take to Goodwill, you will still get your tax deduction for that. Um, and then we are in the process of, uh, talking about what's coming up next. We, we just received a huge donation of maybe thirty, forty boxes of DVDs. Uh, yeah, and maybe, uh.
Blank or movies?
They're movies, movies, like collections, some are like multiples, uh, the class, yeah, from the, the entire spectrum of like Hollywood history, books, some comics, and, uh, we just received a huge donation of that. So we're figuring out what that's gonna look like as far as the big donation day. Uh, so we're, uh, you guys will be hearing from us soon to see about putting together maybe like a big swap meet before school, maybe. Nudge, nudge.
Hey, well, thank you for your good work. It's always a pleasure to, to see you guys and, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you all for helping us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, I think that pretty much wraps everything up. Farmers Market, are you online, Greenbelt Farmers Market? Hey, good evening. Are you there?
Hi, it's Scott Feifield here and Greg Rusk.
Hey, Scott. Hey, Greg. How you doing?
Good, thanks.
Welcome. We appreciate, uh, your, your application, uh, for basic certification as a recognition group, which essentially means it'd be using the facilities, the parking lot, uh, and also the storage space underneath the Aquatic and Fitness Center for the Farmers Market. I'm so excited, uh, looking forward to the Sunday. Do you want to talk a little bit about what's new with the Farmers Market this year? What some of your needs are and what, uh, what we can look for? Many, uh, new vendors there this year?
Uh, we have six new vendors this year. Um, we've been, we, we turned down a number of applications because we're trying to keep the, uh, choice of vendors, uh, diverse. And so, um, I think so far we're accomplishing that. Um, but yeah, six new vendors. Uh, we have somebody selling jams. We have someone selling Thai food. Um, we have, uh, At Waters, which other people on our, um, committee were excited about. Frankly, I hadn't heard of At Waters before, but apparently they're locally well-known. And, um, so yeah, I think there'll be new things for people to see. Um, we have thirty-one vendors total, so six out of thirty-one shows that we're retaining a fair number of vendors from the past. Um, one of the notable absences this year will be Schlegel, uh, who was with the market from day one, I'm told. Um, they've kind of repurposed their business, uh, to serve the food insecure people who are in their, more local to their farm. Um, so they've decided, uh, not to continue, um, with our Farmers Market at least, uh, because having some of the people off of the farm for the entire day uh, just took too many resources away from that new mission of their business.
I was wondering about that. Uh, so they're still open? So if you drive up Old Gun Powder Road, uh, they're there. Is that where Schlegel's is? No?
Uh, I thought they were in Waldorf.
In Waldorf, excuse me, Waldorf. Okay, that's, that's not, okay.
Yeah, I mean, they did do some of the winter deliveries that some of our vendors do. So, um, they, they stayed active with our market, you know, up till last month. Um, but otherwise the market will look ostensibly the same. Uh, you know, we're kind of, uh, hemmed in by our footprint. Uh, Greg and I were there yesterday lining off, uh, the locations of the vendor stalls. Um, and we'll continue to have, um, two-hour groups of music, um, each, each day.
So the live music and community groups also occasionally will have a table there?
Right, yeah. I, you know, I learn a lot at some of the community groups, especially, uh, you know, we've had Kristen there and other NASA people uh, on certain key days. And so, um, you know, it's not just, um, sponsors hawking their wares, but it's also an opportunity to, uh, be surprised by learning something. And Greg's gonna try to highlight, um, special, uh, community groups in, in his newsletter each week. But yeah, the, 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 the city, of course, supports us. Uh, you named a couple of the ways. Um, but you know, we rely on the city to turn on the electrical outlets. We have, uh, limited, uh, electrical availability in that space. Um, so you know, the positioning of our vendors relies on a couple of them having access to electricity. And then we've gotta, uh, keep the vendors who use propane a certain distance away. Uh, so you know, we have our, our layout based on some of the, the safety rules that we've been given.
Right, so Sunday's a big day and I, I guess the health department comes out, uh, on Sunday. Before you open up, everything's all mapped out and.
Health department permitting, right?
Sometimes something will come up at the last minute, but, uh, you know, it's, it's always a little drama, but everything kind of falls together. How is everything looking, Mr. Varna, just as far as the setup?
Yeah, the city's ready. Uh, Public Works, Police Department, Recreation, we've all met and, uh, we're ready for Sunday.
I'm excited. I, I know you guys are looking for volunteers as well to, to help. How many volunteers does it take to, uh, to man a or to woman a Farmers Market on a typical Sunday?
Um, I think Julie looks for about five people for setup around nine thirty. Um, then we have four people during the market who man the info tent, uh, which includes, uh, interacting with the SNAP and WIC recipients. And then we usually have three to four people take down at two o'clock. And like you mentioned, uh, setup and takedown involves retrieving and returning stuff underneath the, the right side of the pool. And, uh, yeah, so, um, it's not like any volunteer works the entire four to five hour shift. But, um, there's a group of people that are, are regulars for the setup. Um, at the takedown, we have typically one guy who brings his vehicle, which makes taking some of the tables and chairs, et cetera, down to the pool a little easier. And we also have, um, an organization that works with our farm vendors to take the unsold produce and donate it to, um, a church in Laurel that distributes that to, uh, more food insecure people.
Excellent. Well, you know.
We've already reached out to them.
I, I, I like to help out a little bit as a volunteer. I, I know that it's important for people to, uh, to RSVP and let, let, uh, Julie know that, uh, they're coming to volunteer. It's also, I think, it's good for people to know that if they're just around at two o'clock when things are shutting down, it's a good gesture just to go over and ask if, if you guys need any help. There's not any extensive training or anything you have to go through. So, uh, that's good stuff. Hey, uh, so another thing, you talked about food insecurity. And I know that, uh, the Farmers Market for the past few years, probably about four or five years, has been able to accept SNAP payments. Is that gonna continue?
It's gonna continue, um, and WIC as well. Um, so yeah, it takes a, a fair amount of infrastructure on Carissa Ravalski's point, point or part to maintain it. You know, we work with, uh, Somatic to, um, kind of refresh our, um, membership every year. And then they give us some upfront money, which we recently received. Um, and then, um, you know, the vendors turn in a receipt at the end of every market of how many, um, how much Somatic money they've, they've taken in and they get reimbursed periodically through the year. So, yeah, you know, um, from what I was told, it happened before I joined the board, it's quite an undertaking to put the infrastructure in place. And then it's a little less of an undertaking to maintain it, but it still requires a fair amount of, um, perseverance uh, to, to do all the, the parts. And if, if you saw last year, you know, there's both, um, wood and plastic, um, tokens that we hand out because we're matching value up to thirty dollars each market. because we're matching value up to thirty dollars each market. So, yeah, we, it seems to be something that's, that's well-used. And not all of the tokens last year got returned. So Greg is going to highlight in the newsletter that, hey, if you've got them hiding around in your, in your house, you know, find them and use them. This year, they, they don't expire.
Yeah, it's a great thing, providing through WIC and SNAP, access to fresh local produce and foods. And with the prepared foods, are there any new prepared food vendors?
The Thai food vendor is a prepared food vendor, and otherwise, no. We've got somebody selling candles. We've got one dessert vendor, as I mentioned before, and our goal to maintain some diversity. You know, a lot of the new applicants that applied were dessert vendors. Our market manager, Julie, believes that during the pandemic, a lot of people started, you know, baking at home and then decided, hey, I could turn this into a business. So, you know, we're trying to, to keep only a finite number of dessert vendors and, and keep what we're offering diverse. But, yeah, so the Thai food is the, the new prepared food. So we'll have Indonesian food one place and, and Thai food on the other end of the market.
We're still going to have the quesadillas and the.
Yeah, it's a tough day, you know, the few days of the year that LP Keen doesn't show up, I know people are heartbroken, so.
Yes. You were talking about desserts, now, simple pleasures, they're going to be back, because ice cream, this is not just dessert. It's breakfast, it's lunch.
Right, and we move them right in front of LP Keen, so you can have your dinner and, or your lunch and turn around and have your dessert right there.
Perfect.
You don't have to walk to the other end of the market.
Works for me. Mr. Varda, any, well, this is a basic application. Any comments or thoughts about the Farmers Market?
Just looking forward to the season getting started and, you know, we're, we're ready to go and let's get it, get it underway.
Sunday's a big day, so are, are you going to cut a ribbon or, you know, council? We just love to, to get out and cut ribbons and things like that. So, you know, ring the bell officially at ten o'clock on Sunday?
I mean, literally have a bell, and if you want to come ring the bell at ten o'clock, you're, you're welcome to do that. That's not one of our prestigious positions, so we'll turn it over to anybody who.
Turn it over to anybody, okay.
You're welcome to write a greeting in chalk on the, the ground there. You know, we have someone who does that two or three times a month. But if you've got something special that you want to say that kind of looks like a ribbon-cutting ceremony, by all means, do that.
I can write something. Does it have to be legible?
It does.
No, you're going to have to read it. You're going to have to read it yourself.
Oh, okay. Okay. Hey, Scott, you know, thank you for.
The city does for us is those overhead banners. Greg pointed out yesterday that the, the current banner is for the Greenman Festival, so I assured him that our banner would be shortly following it after the, after the festival got up, but we do appreciate that.
And there was a sandwich board out on Greenbelt Road. Are you, are you able to put that out? You know, you, the Farmers Market that's over in College Park on Campus Drive, they, they actually have a sign up on Kennelworth Avenue as well as one coming in, so it's kind of hard. So are you going to try and put, put that sign out there on Greenbelt Road?
I didn't know we did that in the past, so that is not part of our current plans. We have a sandwich board that we use within the market, but we hadn't talked about it being anywhere. I mean, there's a permanent sign on Greenbelt Road and on Kennelworth for the market.
Is it a sandwich board or is it just like a permanent sign that, because there's somewhere, there's a permanent sign that, that's up there that says Farmers Market Sundays or something?
There is. No, it's not, it wasn't a permanent sign. It was just.
I don't recall the sandwich board.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, the, the, Greg, we, we were talking yesterday that the, the sign on Greenbelt Road and on Kennelworth both make it appear that the Farmers Market is year-round. I guess the state used to put a little thing on there that said closed for the season, but they've stopped doing that. So, so we do need to kind of publicize that, hey, we are back. There'll be an advertisement in the, in the news review and, of course, the newsletter that Greg is writing.
Fantastic. Anything else you need from the city?
Yeah, we've been working out all week, you know, who to call. Of course, if there's any vehicles parked in the, in the lot when we arrive, we rely on the city to get rid of them. And, you know, they drop off some barrels that we use to block off some parking spaces and, you know, literally keep people from driving through the market. But nothing new that we haven't asked of the, the city in the past.
Okay, Scott. Well, appreciate you taking on the, the leadership role. It's good to see a couple of new faces on the board, and I'm looking forward to coming out on Sunday and just shopping around a little bit and seeing what's good at the Greenbelt Farmers Market. Thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome. And Greg is one of our, our new faces here. He's there on camera, so.
Hey, Greg, do you have anything to add?
I just want to quick little thing. We are, we are sort of training or alerting the vendors about the bag ordinance. So they're going to be basically operating similar to how a grocery store works with, you know, small bags for produce, individual produce items. And then, you know, they're probably not all prepared to hand out large paper bags, but we're sending out the messaging that it's best if everybody just brings your reusable bags.
Do you, do you have any bags?
We do have a vendor from Pennsylvania and a vendor from Virginia. So we're trying to educate them that, you know, most of them are involved in other markets and probably already know what's going on in the, in the state, but, or in the county. But nonetheless, we're doing our best to, to make sure they know the plans here.
Do we have bags that we could have there?
Have some bags, but maybe, you know, thinking going forward, maybe you should have some ba, nice bags for sale there at the Farmers Market table for people that might want to buy one, something, you know, upgraded for just the regular.
We give out free bags, Mayor. We just have to encourage people to stop buying and pick them up. But, yes, we have bags at the, at the info table that we hand out.
Okay.
We've been doing that even before the ordinance came in.
Which is excellent. Thank you so much. Thanks for all you do, and see you on Sunday.
You're welcome.
Okay, have a good evening. So, I don't know, any word, Mr. Howard, any emails or any correspondence? I don't, Coach K, you want to come up and say a couple of words? Sure, but make it real quick, because some council members are just.
Down this road before, I think in the past, what I've asked them to do is come to a council meeting under presentations, and you can ask them some questions then if.
Yeah.
Okay.
What I've done in the past.
Okay, and did you have any feedback from the committee on this proposal?
Yes.
It was yesterday and today.
That's why I sent the, the paper to you. It was yesterday and today. Oh, we're at eight fifteen today.
That's okay.
We'll reach out to him tomorrow and reschedule.
Yeah, we'll work it out.
Yeah, we'll work it, we'll work it out. So the Boys and Girls Club got seventy-seven points from the panel. That's in the very good range. The grant request for eleven thousand dollars is thirty-four percent of the organization's FY25 operating budget. Reviewer comments were solid financial management, would like to know more about impact long-term and how this differs from other city-county programs, and perhaps could seek, seek some additional income sources. That was it.
Those are very thoughtful comments. So if there were any questions, I'd probably ask about sports. I don't think they're doing cheerleading anymore, or are they? Or some things are changing around. Are they doing soccer?
There's, there's an ebb and flow to the sports programs, yeah. But basketball is big. Coach K can talk about the football program if he would like. He's a, he's a coach. How many teams did you have? How did the season go?
Okay.
Flag football?
Okay, right now, um, yes. All right, so look, I'm going, Owen's on the phone. You want me to just put it to the?
Oh, sure, if you want to, sure.
Okay. You're on speaker, Owen.
I'm on speaker?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Howard, how you doing? It's great to have you, well, great to almost have you here. We were just looking at, at the proposal for the contribution group coming up this year. I was just kind of curious. We always want to know about what's new, and it sounds like you got some different sports, the flag football, that's kind of new, or how, how long has that been going?
So, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so right now, currently, we're in our third season of the flag football. But the flag football program has expanded a little bit. We're currently serving about two hundred and somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty members and young people in the Greenbelt area with about eighty percent being from Greenbelt. We also have tackle football, which follows up, and we also have track and field that's going on right now as well. Our programs have been strong in those, and in addition, they've been strong in basketball. Those are our primary programs. There is interest as of this year of bringing soccer back from some new parents ages five to ten. But we don't have enough members in soccer to field the team. So what we did last year was we partnered with Greenbelt Soccer Alliance to bring some of the members over there. In addition to that, we also partnered with the lacrosse program. I think it's PG Pride. I can't remember what the name of their team is now. But they, they, they played over at Greenbelt Middle School or did workshops over in Greenbelt Middle School. And so there's some gen, new generated interest that we're seeing that people want sports and they want to get their kids active in some sports. But as, as we wrote in the report, our challenge is there is a decline in volunteerism. So the same people tend to be supervising the same sports, and we're trying to expand that a little bit in the upcoming year. So the other positive is that we have some potential, for some new sponsors. Greenbelt's, um, Jersey Mike is, is one of our potential sponsors for this upcoming year. They're thinking about sponsoring track, and we're going to see what kind of partnerships we can derive from that. We're proud to say we still offer the cheapest sports because of your guys' support over the years. I think the biggest, the biggest challenge that we probably have is the volunteerism and the fact that some of our sports are so diluted that we can't offer it consistently with like soccer, like cheerleading. And so what, one of the thoughts that we had is like, maybe through your leadership, Mayor Jordan, and through the city council's leadership, that we can do some things where we can partner with some of these other sports in Greenbelt to offer some kind of discounted rates, so, so we can have more interaction between the, the different organizations. Because right now, we, the only partnership we work with is Greenbelt Soccer Alliance and the, um, and the other program, which is not a Greenbelt program, which is the lacrosse. They introduced that.
Hey, we're always open to a dialogue. You kind of work through Mr. Varda and Mr. Phelan to, to see what you can work out. Yeah, so cheerleading, it seemed, it was pretty popular there about four years ago, so that's, that's on the ebb right now?
Yeah, our cheerleading commissioner has had two children since then. So we've had some interest, obviously with her being a new mom, she hasn't been able to do it. And, you know, we're former national champions in cheerleading. And so what we would like to start off doing is bringing it back to at least the foot, football games and so we can generate enough interest to make it competitive. But when we talked to her last, obviously she just had another child probably about a month or so ago, two months ago.
Yeah. Hey, and you mentioned track and field, so just in terms of facilities, you're trying, do you use the? I think I've seen, seen you all out there at the Roosevelt Track. Is that where you're using for track and field?
Yes, that's what we're using for track and field.
Saw you all out there a couple of days ago.
A permit's been put in for that. We also use Northway Field for flag football. And if we were to have a cycle program, it would be over there. So, you know, Greg Varda and the rest of the team continue to be really strong partners with us in terms of giving us access to the field. We do have to incur some costs for practice facilities. We do have to incur some costs for any extended other activities, but for the most part, we get a lot of our stuff done through Greenbelt, and it's convenient for the family. But as you know, Mayor Jordan, one of our challenges also is to get Franklin Square involved, and we just don't have the connections that we used to have to get, keep them connected to us.
Okay, okay. So, council, any questions about the budget proposal? Or is any general questions you want to ask, you want to know about?
Thank you for all your hard work. It's not easy. I know.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you so much, but, Orin, you, you got to come in here. It's every, every year, you know, when you're on the phone, we're bending over backwards, because we know that you work so hard, and you've been doing this for quite some time. And, and I know you were looking for a transition, but you are still the president. Is that correct?
That's correct, and absolutely. My apologies, I had it rescheduled because I'm originally scheduled for ten fifteen tonight on, on, on this date, and then they got moved. So they got, must have been a misconnection, uh, connection between me and Kathy Pratt's office in terms of the new time.
Okay, it's probably ten fifteen. Yes, and we decided to break it up to make it easier and more convenient so we'd have to go so late. So, any questions or any other thoughts for the city? What else do you need from the city?
Um, just, just continued support. I feel like we are always on the cusp of either not having enough people to keep it going and having a whole bunch of hard workers that really make the program thrive. And it would be nice to know that even after we're all gone, that this program could survive. I think one of the biggest discussions that we always have is like if Tanya Thomas and some of the other people that have been here for over a decade or so, like myself, if we leave, then this program, we fear, might falter. So we're always looking for new ideas and new ways to collaborate, so we can make the burden easier for everybody. So we're looking for, you know, and this is something, if Greg is there, something that maybe we could organize where we get all the people that, that facilitate sports in this area to come together and really kind of think through how we can kind of work together collaboratively to make sure that we're maximizing young people's opportunities in the city of Greenbelt.
I think that's a great idea. Hey, please, keep council informed about events. Is there like a opening event or, you know, the playoff games, usually we get an email or some notice. And I, I think last year, every, every year I try and come out. Of course, you know, I see the football practices going on out there by the tennis courts, and I usually do come out.
Yes, you, you absolutely do, and we will get you on the email list. We are, I believe, a two-time champion of basketball, basketball, and we've done really well in flag football, and we, we compete when we're here. And we do have an NBA player currently, Najee Marshall, plays for the Pelicans, that came out of our program.
That's fantastic. Let me ask Coach K a quick question before we wrap up. Coach K, what is the secret sauce, the secret ingredient that, that has, you know, brought about two-time champions of the football team? What, what makes Greenbelt Boys and Girls Club Football Team so successful?
Coaches.
Yes, and that's true. I, I would agree with you.
And the parents that bring them up, but.
Yeah, and the, the parents, you know, it's, it's a question of getting the parents engaged. Those players, they help out too. Well, uh.
I've kept my commitment to stable, uh, keep my requests stabilized or reduced per year. One of the questions that we're, we're, we're really going to explore and we're going to kind of do a needs assessment of whether or not if we keep it like this, do we have to go up in price? Or do we need to come back to the city next year and really increase the price to build a solid program? So I'd increase the ask to build a solid program, but over the last five years, I've kept it lower. I've either kept it the same or reduced it.
Well, I think the, the question, the answer is probably both. And if you can up the sponsorships, that, that's the, probably the least harmful solution. You know, it's always if you can get sponsorship support, that, that just makes it easier. But certainly your programs just involve kids from all across the city in many different ways. So in, in some ways, the Boys and Girls Club may have the widest reach of any program, recreational program that are.
Absolutely.
These groups. So, you know, thank you for what you do. Appreciate you. And I think we're going to wrap up at this point.
All right, well, thank you guys again. I'm sorry I didn't get to see your faces. I was looking. All right. Well, thank you guys again. I'm sorry I didn't get to see your faces. I was looking forward to it, but you'll see me around.
Okay, you have a good evening. So that that's going to wrap up. Yeah, thank you so much, Coach K. Thank you. So that these interviews with the contribution groups, the recognition groups, that's a wrap. I'm going to ask the city manager or Ms. Gaiman if you have any thoughts, you know, you kind of, we got the the booklet, we have the request, and you've actually incorporated these numbers, the requests into the proposal.
Correct. The there are some minor I'm sorry, there'll be a review that we need to make between there's some minor adjustments between the application and what's on the final number, so we'll provide some explanation where it needs to be explained, just minor minor things there, but the.
So they weigh in a little bit, some modifications. I don't really know, but it's possible.
Yes, it is possible. And when we're prepared for a a future the final review, there'd be a list of adjustments that are being made and council votes on those adjustments. Some are adjustments that we've discussed and we're queuing them up in a spreadsheet, but ultimately, council needs to vote vote on those adjustments.
So I I want to thank you, Ms. Gaiman, if you're still online and Nicole DeWald and Greg Varda for for the work you're doing. But what I would like to to make a request, you know, we're kind of getting down to the we'll be having that review coming up pretty soon. So I I would really like to get a listing of requests that council has made and modifications somehow. I don't I'm not dictating what sort of a form it needs to be, but it would really be helpful. We need that. Council needs that for consideration so that we can get discussion during the review.
Mayor, that is that information is coming to you on Friday in the council's packet. We do have a have memo and all of the revisions that have been requested either by council or by staff, and we will also have the budget screen accompanying that document. So you will have it on Friday.
Fantastic. That's really, really helpful. And once again, I want to thank Nicole DeWald and Greg Varda for overseeing this process and if you will share our Kathy Practice. And please share our appreciation with the the committee, the advisory board representatives for the work that they put into preparing these comments. They're very, very helpful. So thank you so much.
Our pleasure, and we look forward to possibly having a discussion about this program. Hopefully sometime this summer.
Hey, any word on the Spring Hill Lake Playground?
Yeah, but it's it's not going to start till after Labor Day.
Okay.
Could start earlier, but we would be without a playground for, you know, six to eight weeks in the middle of the summer, and that's just not gonna.
That's not gonna fly. And once it starts, it's gonna take less than a month.
They say six weeks, and that's without any bad weather, so factor in at least, I think, a week a week or so of bad weather, so. Yeah. That's where that's where I'm at.
Three Sisters Garden will still be accessible while they're working.
Yeah, we'll make sure that that's cordoned off and and has a an opening or an access so they can get to that, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Jenny.
We had talked about possibly, I know the city manager mentioned this, and I think you mentioned it to Mr. Varda, doing like a sort of a little social activity when we opened it, like hot dogs or ice cream or something like that. But maybe we could still do something like that in the spring, just even though we're not opening a new playground, but just a sort of a community event for like council to come out and meet people and I don't know, like some kind of ice cream social, just to, I don't know, kick off the summer with them.
Our plan was to, we were holding off on the date for the the Spring Festival because our hope was the playground would be finished and we can do the ribbon cutting with the Spring Festival, and that's not going to happen. So we're kicking around some ideas to hold multiple functions over there, one for the after school program. We want to do a end of the school year bash with them. And then we'll probably hold another community event on the weekend, but we don't have those dates set yet. But it'll it'll happen probably, I'm thinking, early June.
Sure that if if we do something before schools or right at the end of the school that I get the information so I can share it and tell them the manner before they all gone.
We will be sure to get that out.
Do it on the fifteenth because there's already things on the fifteenth.
And and then, you know, once the playground is done next fall, we'll have a bigger, larger event, ribbon cutting, cookout, band, everything. Right?
Sounds good.
Okay. Hey, thank you so much, Greg. Thanks for the update. Mr. Sammarone, anything for the good of the order?
I would just say for the October event that Greg just mentioned, there's some expectation you would have an apron for the cookout, so.
Apron? I need a chef's hat.
Get you a chef hat.
Okay, well.
We got to get through the permitting process.
Okay. Well, without further ado, let's go ahead and call it a night because we're back here tomorrow. Now, let me ask, are we starting at seven or seven thirty? Seven o'clock tomorrow, and that should be, yeah, that should be a pretty brief work session. And there's no executive session afterwards, okay?